Good afternoon. Today is August 26, 2024. I'd like to call the City of Tuscaloosa Zoning Board of Adjustments meeting to order. At this time, I'd like to introduce our fellow board members. I'm Michelle Coley, the Chair, starting with Mr. Rollins.
Paul Rollins Jr.
Linda Ford.
Tim Gilliam.
Mary Catherine Holt.
I'd also like to introduce our city staff that's with us this evening. From the Department of Urban Development, Ms. Emily Hayes, Associate Director of Planning. Jonathan Bowen, Neighborhood Resources Coordinator. And from the Office of the City Attorney, Ms. Kim King. And Mr. Kevin Jones, helping with the video production in the back. Did you wave, Kevin? Now, the Board of Adjustments does not have the authority to enact zoning laws or special exceptions, nor does the Board have authority to rule on claims of equal protection of the law or the fairness or unfairness of any zoning ordinance. Now, by virtue of the state law and the city ordinances, the purpose of the ZBA is as follows. Here appeals from decisions of the zoning officer of the city. Grant special exceptions to the zoning code in accordance with the terms as established by the city council therein. Grant variances from the terms of the zoning code when owing to the special conditions, a literal enforcement of the code would result in unnecessary hardship. Now, no one factor determines what is an unnecessary hardship, but all relevant factors, when taken together, must indicate that the plight of the property in question is unique in that it cannot be put reasonably to a conforming use because of limitations imposed upon it by reasons of its classification in a specified zone. Now, my working definition of an unnecessary hardship is as follows. The property cannot be put to any reasonable use under its current zoning classification. It must be a unique and peculiar difficulty relating to the property of a serious and significant nature. Now, it must relate to the property and not any personal issues. Now, this includes economic, financial gain or loss. A variance may not be granted where the property owner merely suffers a financial loss of a kind that is common to all of the property owners in the area. Now, circumstances that are not hardships, self-inflicted or self-created, inconvenient or personal. Now, the Zoning Board of Adjustment, by virtue of state law and City of Tuscaloosa ordinances, does not have the jurisdiction or authority to consider, interpret, and/or enforce any term or condition of subdivision covenants and/or homeowner association rules or regulations. Now, these matters are therefore not relevant areas of inquiry by the Board on any petition. Such covenants or regulations are between the private parties involved and not the ZBA. That having been said, any decision made by the ZBA on any particular case does not necessarily preclude the enforcement of such subdivision covenants and/or HOA rules or regulations by other lawful means. Now, this is a public hearing. It is being recorded, videotaped, and is livestreamed live on the city's website, Facebook, as well as local TV, local cable TV. Proper decorum, civility, and respect for others is required at all times. There is a sign up, there were sign up sheets outside for the public comment. Up to four speakers will be given the opportunity to speak in favor of a petition, and up to four speakers will be given the opportunity to speak in opposition to a petition. Now, all speakers have up to five minutes unless the Board votes to allow a longer time. When you are at the podium, please speak directly into the microphone and state your name and address for the record. All comments should be directed to the Board. No questions or comments are to be directed to city staff. Now, I would ask city staff to confirm for the record that all the appropriate and required public and individual property owner notices for each case upon the docket of petitions now before the Board have been made in accordance with the law.
Yes, it has.
Okay. Now, this hearing is an opportunity for the petitioner to present their case, for the public to inquire and make their views known about the petition, and for the Board members to gather relevant facts before making its decision. Now, city staff will introduce the petition and present facts and information to the Board concerning the same. The petitioner or petitioner's designated representative will be asked to make comments and answer questions from the Board. The petitioner will be given up to 10 minutes unless the Board votes to allow a longer time. Now, the four members of the public that are in support of the petition and the four members of the public that are in opposition to the petition, who signed up to speak, will then be afforded the opportunity to make inquiries and comments. Now, the petition response. At the close of public comments, the petitioner will be asked to respond to comments if necessary. Any rebuttal will be allowed up to two minutes unless the Board votes to allow a longer time. Now, the Chair may then permit the public to respond, but only to any new issues raised by the petitioner in rebuttal. Any response will be allowed up to two minutes unless the Board votes to allow a longer time. Now, at the close of public comment, or once the Board is satisfied that it has received all relevant information on a petition, the Chairman will close further comment or discussion, and the Board will just then discuss the matter. Now, the Chair will read into the record the motion to approve the request, along with any conditions set by the Board. Now, the Board members will commence voting. Four votes are required to approve any petition, not a simple majority of the Board. Once again, that's four votes are required to approve any petition. Please leave signs in your yard. Staff will pick up the signs as soon as possible. Now, any party agreed by any final judgment or decision of such Board of zoning adjustments made within 15 days thereafter appeal therewith to the Circuit Court by filing with such Board a written notice of appeal specifying the judgment or decision which the appeal is taken. Now, the Boards, the Board members have had a chance to review tonight's agenda items. Does anyone, members have a conflict of interest with any of the cases on tonight's agenda?
No.
Okay. Which ones?
Case ZBA 76-.
Okay. So, Ms. Mary Catherine will have to recuse her step out at that time when we vote. I will have to recuse myself on ZBA-90-. Well, wait a minute. 24. And when that comes up, I will step out, and Mr. Gilliam, our Vice Chair, will take over at that time. Anybody else? Get back to my place here, I said that. We don't have anything that's been taken off the agenda tonight. No meeting synopsis. Kim King, is there anything we need to review or update status?
No, there are no updates at this time.
Okay, great. I guess we are ready to get started.
Good afternoon, Board. So, we'll first start cases to be withdrawn. This was ZBA 6024. It was continued last month, and they have requested to withdraw. So, now we'll move into cases to be heard tonight. First case is ZBA 7024. Marchester and Ashley Wells petition for a special exception from the fence and wall regulations. This is at 3049 10th Avenue East, Zone R1, Council District 6. So, here we have the zoning of the property, as well as an aerial view. This is a view of the house looking from 10th Avenue, and then we'll show some pictures later on from the adjacent street. So, the petitioner is requesting a special exception to install an eight-foot-tall wooden privacy fence in place of an existing chain-link fence. Per the petitioner, this new privacy fence will allow their family some privacy, security to play outside safely. Their current fence is nine-and-a-half feet away from the curb line. They have confirmed that if it is approved, they will move it back to be at least 10 feet away from the curb line. So, now we'll show you a couple of images just going around the property. So, here you can start to see the chain-link fence in question, and this is moving across to 31st Street. So, this is technically considered a front yard fence. Here we have, on your left, you see in red, that is the existing location of the chain-link fence. On the right, in the blue, that is where that new privacy fence will be located. The applicable fence and wall regulations. So, this is for front yard fences. They have to be less than 50% opaque. They cannot be closer than 10 feet to the curb line, and they also have to be less than four feet tall. So, that is why that they are here before you to ask for a special exception from those applicable regulations. We did not receive any public comment for this request, and we do have the representative here in person.
Thank you. Any questions for the city? Mr. and Ms. Wells?
Hello, my name is Ashley Wells. I live at 3049 10th Avenue East. And that's pretty much the gist of what we're requesting. We were also informed that anything over seven feet required some sort of permit. We're willing to stay under that amount, as well as the blue that you see. If we can just have the 31st Street side covered, we'll be fine with that. Again, I have, you know, small children, as well as one that is disabled there. It just would help us out a lot if we could have some sort of privacy and security.
So, what you're saying is that where the blue line is, is where if you could just get that approved at six feet, you guys would be okay with that?
Absolutely fine.
I think she said just 30, just, this is the street, right?
31st Street? All of that blue, that and blue is what we want covered. Yes.
All that in blue on that picture, okay.
The rest of it, technically, we don't have to have. That's encased by other neighbors that we're very familiar with, but the street side is our fear.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Wells?
What material? What are you, what are you gonna build a fence out of?
I'm sorry?
What material? What, what would you build a fence out of?
It would be wood. That's all I know. I'm not handy. I just know it's wood. Don't ask her any more questions. It's wood. Please, no.
Question for the city. This property has two front yards. Is that what triggered everything?
Correct.
And she can go up to eight feet, correct?
So, technically, in a front yard, it can't be any taller than four feet and 50% opaque. So, in a residential district, we do allow up to eight feet, but that's where anything over seven feet requires a permit, engineering drawings.
Any other, Linda? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wells. All right. Do we have anybody signed up to speak for or against? We have Gary Ward.
Good evening. My name is Gary Ward. I live at 3033 12th Avenue East. I'm approximately 500 feet from where the Wells property is. I'm not here to object to their request for a wooden fence. What I would object to is a request for an eight-foot wooden fence to go along with what three other property owners currently have who have wooden fences on 31st Street East is that you approve a six-foot wooden fence as opposed to an eight-foot wooden fence.
Okay. I think she said that she's okay with six feet, so is that answers yours?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
All right. Russell Mallett?
My name is Russell Mallett.
I'm sorry?
I live at 3014 10th Avenue East, a few houses down from people. My main concern is not that I'm against a fence. It's just now the backyard seems to contain anywhere from one to three cars, three to four four-wheelers. And I'm just concerned that a four-foot or any kind of wooden fence, it's just gonna be more garbage in the backyard. I'm sorry, not garbage, but some kind of holding facility. That's my main thing, 'cause it's, 'cause if you saw some of the pictures now, there's cars in the yard. And when people top that hill coming into our neighborhood, that's the first thing you see is their house. And it seems to, it's gonna hurt their property value, plus all the other neighbors' property value. And there's always constantly cars on the street. I'm not sure if that's against the law or not. It used to be a neighborhood thing that you could not have cars on the street. I don't know if that regulation has expired or not, but anyway, that's my main concern. So, not that I'm against a fence, or, but anyway, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak for or against? Okay, at this time, we'll close public comment and begin with Board comment. Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, I have no issues. Could we go back to that first picture of the house? I think it's the back one, that one. Looking at the house, of course, with it having the two front yards, I have no issue with it. And I actually have no issue with the fence being either six feet or seven feet, whichever the Board is comfortable with, I'm fine. And the reason I want to go back to this picture was, you can see that property on the right-hand side with the privacy fence as well. As far as things being in the backyard, their privacy fence will actually assist with that, so you won't be able to see into the backyard to see if there's an additional cars or four-wheelers in their backyard. So, I have no issues.
I have no, I have to agree with Mr. Rollins. I have no issues either. I, I think that it'll be a definite improvement to the neighborhood having a fence, a wooden fence rather than the chain-link, so I have no problem with it. The fact that she doesn't want to go all the way around the property, that's great. Having children myself, I can certainly understand wanting to keep them in the wooden fence away from that street and out of the view of other people.
My question for the city, if they decide they want to go all the way around, would they need to come back to us for that, or they?
They would not. This is only here before you tonight because of the front yard, the secondary front yard and the requirements for that. They could allow for up to an eight-foot fence by right around the perimeter of the back of the house and the other side of the house, as long as it didn't extend to the front yard.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Okay, I have no issue with this, and I think for Mr. Mallett, his concern, I think the fence would actually help that, because you wouldn't be readily able to see what's going on in their backyard. And I think six feet for this side, I think that would be good. And like you said, it goes along with the street, the fence across the street kind of keeps it. I like, so I can see that. Okay.
I have no issue with this. I agree with my fellow Board members on all the reasons. I'm good with six-foot-tall wooden fence.
Yeah, I agree with the other Board members. I really have no additional comments. Anytime we can get rid of a chain-link fence, I'm usually in favor, so.
All right, so that closed Board comment. At this time, I will read the motion. ZBA-70-24, Marchester and Ashley Wells petition for a special exception for the fence and wall regulations on the property located at 3049 10th Avenue East, Zoned R1, Council District 6, with the, that it's a six-foot fence stipulation? Voting with Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Approved. So, I see.
All right, we'll move on to next case, which is ZBA 7124. Clifton and Donna Wallace petition for a variance from the residential setback regulations at 1619 Sunrise Point Way. This is Zoned R1 and Council District 3. So, here we have the zoning of the property, as well as an aerial view. This is a view of the house from the public street. The petitioner is requesting a variance to construct a covered patio that will extend into the rear yard setback. This property was developed as part of the Waterfall Plan Unit Development, and these properties and surrounding properties, they require a 20-foot rear yard setback. The proposed carport is going to extend approximately five feet into that rear yard setback, so that's why they are before you tonight. Per the petitioner, the covered patio will better shield the side area from weather, and this petitioner has also received approval from their Homeowners Association. So, the applicable regulations, here we have rear yard, which is defined. Take just a moment.
Yeah, let's take a moment, make sure that everything clears out.
All right. So, the applicable regulations for rear, rear yard is defined here. As I mentioned, as it was developed as part of a plan unit development, they got to choose and set their own setbacks. So, with that being a 20-foot setback, which you can see here in the site plan, they would like to extend into five feet into that rear yard setback. So, this is just a general outline. You see, they have the front, the side, and the rear yard setbacks called out. In that red dashed area here is where that new extension will be located. We have a couple of additional images. This is just another example of the survey provided. They also showed the adjacent properties in their area. Looking at the plat, looking at the records for these properties, they all have the same 20-yard setback. And then, looking at the proposal itself, so you can see they have an existing pergola. They are going to remove that pergola and instead have a new patio covered that will extend five feet beyond where you see that rear building line that's called out in the plans here. And then, here we have an existing and proposed drawing to support the petition. We did not receive any public comment before this request, and we do have the petitioner here in person.
Are you aware of any properties along the street getting a variance to allow this? Or is this the first one?
From our records, we didn't see any previous cases. We looked at other building permits. None of them quite exactly match what's being proposed tonight.
So, is it the eve that's getting over, or is it columns?
So, because of the new, here you can see it's the columns. We allow, from a zoning perspective, the eve to overhang that rear yard setback with the column, and it essentially is an extension of the building footprint. So, that, that's why it's the columns.
It's the columns.
Yeah.
So, can the columns, the second, the first set of columns, can they be moved any, to any point?
I don't know from a structural standpoint. I know we, we talked about that briefly with the applicant, and I believe he consulted his, his builder and engineer on the project. I defer to him to answer that.
I know at a previous, at a previous meeting, there was a situation where one-sided street was up under the pud, and the other side wasn't. For this particular street, is it both sides or just one side?
So, I'm gonna go back just, I'm gonna go to this one. So, all of the properties here and here are part of the Waterfall Plan Unit Development. There is a separate neighborhood that this backs up to, and you can see, it's kind of interesting, they have this 10-foot buffer, and that's to shield from the neighborhood back behind them, but they also have that 20-foot rear yard setback, so it was a unique situation.
Any more questions for the city? Thank you, Jonathan. Mr. and Ms. Wallace?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Clifton Wallace. I live at 1619 Sunrise Point Way, Tuscaloosa, 35406, in the community of Waterfall. My wife, Donna, and I retired and moved to Tuscaloosa about two years ago to spend quality time with our family and especially our two grandchildren. Our home faces to the northeast, and our patio faces to the southwest. And as you know, the majority of the storms come from the southwest with driving winds and rain. And so, that whole patio area there gets soaked every time that there's a, a storm or a fast-moving rain shower. And we also experience the afternoon sun. It can get very brutal back there, very hot. We started this planning process about six months ago. We have a design, we have a contractor, and we have Waterfall HOA approval for the project. During this last six months, I've talked to my neighbors on the right, to the left, and behind me in Greystone. They had no objection. Prior to filing this variance, I talked to them again, and they had no objection. So, we, we would have definitely mitigated anything that they were concerned about. We need variance to get our permit and start the project, and we're looking forward to start to enjoy our back patio area with our, our family and friends, and especially our grandchildren. So, we'd like to thank you all for considering this request tonight. Also like to thank Jonathan Bowen and Emily Hayes, all their hard work and support in this process.
Any questions for Mr. Wallace?
Maybe I missed it. Did you discuss with your contractor about moving about the columns?
We did discuss it. He's here. I can have him come up.
You can have him come up.
Hi, my name is Greg Davis. My address is 12440 Le Sueur Road in Northport. I'm with Archer Service Company, and we've been working with Mr. Wallace trying to get the covering over his patio to replace a pergola that doesn't offer any protection from any kind of weather to a more suitable structure to allow the rain where he can put. He's got, invested quite a bit in patio furniture that if he leaves it out, it just gets rained on and mildew, so. Your question about the columns. So, columns could be set back in a roof cantilevered over the columns and stick out, but then those columns would then be in the footprint of where he would like to set up his furniture. And so, if you're allowed a variance for the roof line to go out that far, the column is a minimal structure with a small footprint just to hold up the edge of the roof, and it allows him to open up the patio to put in this furniture.
So, the roof line could continue on with the columns not there? Do I understand?
Couldn't. I'm sure we could make it work.
But he would still have the same covering for the sun and the rain and?
With the column out.
Which I consider a hardship.
Right. So, with the column at the, at the end, that, that sits into his footprint, we can tie the, all the roof structure back into his existing structure with minimal extra engineering, right? You, you can tie the roof joists just into the existing joists and put a new roof. If we have to cantilever that out, then we have to go back and re-engineer how that ties into the house, because now you have a weight load that's gonna be out on the end, cantilevering over the end of that column, that will create upward forces on the existing roof joists, right? So, it's not a preferable way to build. Is it possible?
I mean, what would be your overhang if you put your columns at the real line? Five feet, six feet, eight feet right here? They could set them right up on this rear?
The overhang would be, if we're at the end, if we go to the, where we can, it would be about a 10-foot overhang if we put his column, 'cause the back of, my understanding right now is the back of his house that you see there, the, the part that sticks out the most, is about at the line. Is that my understanding?
According to this drawing, it's, it's not. It's a little, if you look at the gutter, looks like you'd only have roughly about an eight-foot overhang. I mean, so, I mean, I would thought, you know, with some additional wood supports, jacks, you couldn't, you couldn't make that work?
Oh, I'm sure we can. That's just not the design we came up with, but yeah.
Well, the thing of it is, when you're asking for a variance, it's gotta be a hardship. And so, ruining some expensive patio furniture is not the hardship that we... And I understand, 'cause I have some patio furniture that gets rained on, and I understand that, so. But, we're trying, when looking at this, if you can move the columns to the rear building line and then have the overhang, then that serves the purpose of what he's trying to do. And so, that's what we're looking at, because if we give him a variance, then everybody down that row can now come and say, okay, I want to add on, I want to add on. And I don't think that is keeping with what the, the original thought process was with the pud when they said 20 and 10.
Okay.
If the columns sat where you're currently showing them, how far past that, I guess, line are we? I understand there needs to be a hardship component to this, but I also don't want to force them into something that's architecturally very ugly, 'cause other people will see this, so.
Right. So, according to the measurements we took when we were kind of designing this, from his, the existing roof line, that's the furthest out from the back of his house, out to where we wanted to kind of take the new roof line, was about 10 more feet. And so, that now, his, so the back of his house is not, so we have...
But not all 10 of that feet is over the 20-foot rear yard?
No, it, it seems like from that last picture.
Looks like five feet.
Well, it's, to me, that 20-yard rear yard line looks like it only is a couple feet from the back of his house. And the majority is in the red, the red box that would extend out into that.
Will you pull up the design that the posed, the design with the four columns in it? So, you're gonna have four columns, and you were saying something was gonna be in the way of... Are you moving those two columns? You see how there, there are four columns?
Yeah, no, so there, there were, there are some existing columns for the pergola. Those will all get taken. Those will all get taken down.
Okay.
So he's got two separate roof lines. And what we want to do is extend it in two different roof sections. So one will be extending the part that's the furthest out from the house. That'll only come out about 10 feet. And then where the pergola is, that roof line's further from his setback where the pergola is, and we would cover that. That way, the whole patio gets covered under roof.
Can you go back to the plan?
You see, see the picture on the left? Picture on the left is kind of the back of his house right now, without the pergola in it. So you've got his, yeah, see where that is? See how it, part of, part of his patio is covered right now, but it is a very small part of the patio.
So yeah, so you're gonna extend over this flat roof here?
So we're gonna extend the, his covered patio that he has now out another, well, according to those measurements, are eight feet. I think from the wall, it might be 10 feet. It's eight feet from the eve, from the gutter. And then where the pergola is, that would be a whole new roof that would come out and match the same, would come out to the same, the same distance. So his entire patio would be back, be covered.
I understand what you're trying to do, but I'm just trying to understand the hardship. And no offense, but I have outdoor furniture too, but I have no roof over it. So I have to pick up my cushions, take them in the house, like, all the time. But it just seems like that possibly you could...
Not that far.
Move the columns to the rear building line and then, and I'm not an architect and engineer, or any of thing of that nature, but... We're just trying to find the hardship part into, and it can't be financial, and it can't be...
Yeah, I mean, I feel as, I mean, I'm the same way. I mean, looking for the hardship, because you have other neighbors who may want to extend, and then we're back in the same boat as a board, trying to find that hardship when I feel as though you could get what you're looking for, just do a little reconfiguring with your columns and your overhang and your layout, you still get your covered patio, you know? So I'm struggling as well.
So as long as the column's within the footprint, it doesn't matter how far that eve sticks out past it?
Yeah, that's correct.
That's right, that's what, yeah.
That's exactly right. So you can still get what you're looking for here if you just shift those columns back five, six feet from what I'm looking at by these dimensions. If these dimensions are correct, you're shifting it back, so your overhang's not that much, and you can still get that with just some extra framing.
Right. Yeah, when, so when this was drawn and designed, when we looked at the plat, you noticed there was that 10-foot, there's a 10-foot line, and then the way it was drawn, the plat, the 20-foot looked like it was on the side yard, not the backyard. And so that's why we designed it out the way it was, and it wasn't until we got started talking to the city, and they even said, yeah, no, it looks like it's good, and it's like, oh wait, no, it's actually 20 feet on the back. And so we've just stuck with what we had to try to get.
I mean, and I get it, and I'm, and I'm, I'm forward to the patio, if this is what he would like, and I know, I feel like you could still make it work.
This is always tough for me to be able to tell somebody what they do in their backyard, you know? But it's a part of what we've been tasked to do, because, you know, I can understand, I wanna build over this, and I should be able to do it, but unfortunately, we do have, you know, regulations that we have to uphold, and... But we feel like you can do it, go back and do some drawings and look at it and be able to do it and still give him what he wants. And now the money, I don't, I don't know how that's gonna cost. He sounds like that's gonna, but I don't know how that works, but we feel like you should be able to do that and be able to make it work, and then give him the roof line and everything and have it line up.
So I guess my question just would be then, if we go back with architect or engineer and say, here's what they want us to do, and they come back and say, well, to be able to tie it into your existing roof structure, it's really not feasible to do that, then does it allow us to come back and say we can't?
Now, you got a hardship. Now, you got a hardship, because there's no feasible way to do it, and you've got someone that's, you know, an engineer that says, this can't work.
And then to do what you want to do, now we, and I know it seems like, oh, you're putting me through unnecessary changes, but that, you gotta have something that says...
It gives us the hardship.
That gives us the hardship, because right now, we don't have a hardship of, and we just believe it can be done, and so... You know, my Google degree tells me that. So.
I'll get you two, but you'll come out.
So if, I would say, not making a ruling right now, but just from where we're, the discussion, that's probably gonna be where we lean towards. Any other comments to add, or any more questions for... All right, thank you, Mr. Wallace. Thank you for coming up. We don't have anybody signed up to speak for or against. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for and against?
Yeah, I was gonna say...
Do we, do we have the option to have them table it and then come back to us with it, if it is a hardship?
If it is a hardship. If he's not, if the architect said that he's not able to do that, can we, like, table this till...
If the applicant wants to request to continue it, to allow further discussion?
If you'll come back up, Mr. Wallace, you have to say the words.
Give him an opportunity.
Yes, we would request a continuance, if that's okay.
I make a motion to continue this, 7124.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right, so this motion is continued until we get an answer, so let us know, and then, you got a question?
Sorry, yes. So what, my question would be then, what evidence or what do you need? Like, what would you need to say we have, it is a hardship?
If you're able to do it without moving the, the...
Right.
Then you don't have to come back, am I right? That's, that's under the...
Right.
Right. But say, say we give the architect, and he says we can't, so we get the architect here.
So what do we need? Some written something saying to send to our engineers to verify, or what?
Yeah, just work with us. Send, work your architect with us to prove that it can't be extended back and reasons why. We could talk through it, and then we can bring it back to the board next month.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right.
All right. ZBA 7224.
All right, we'll move to ZBA 72. So Ken Horton, petitions for a variance from the accessory structure regulations at 1029 Myrtlewood Drive. This is zoned R3H, Council District 4. Here we have the zoning of the property as well as an aerial view. This one might look familiar. You saw it just about a month ago, so here's a view of the house. And then here is a view of the accessory structure in the rear. And just a closer-up image of that accessory structure. The applicable regulations for accessory structures, particularly the height, is restricted to 18 feet. The petitioner is requesting a variance from the accessory structure regulations to construct or to keep the two-level detached garage that you saw in the previous images. This exceeds the maximum allowed height for an accessory structure. So last month, they received approval from this body for the location of the accessory structure. After we received the drawings, it was noted that the height is over 21 feet. Zoning ordinance restricts it to 18 feet, so that is why they are back before you today. Per the petitioner, if the roof line of the accessory structure were lowered to meet that 18 feet, it would not be possible to install the doors for the exterior that meet building code for proper ingress and egress. The petitioner stated that the accessory structure essentially acts as a buffer between their house and the adjacent three-story apartments, and we can show an image of that. I believe we do have an image of that from the petitioner. This is also, or this petition also has to be approved by the Historic Preservation Commission, which will be heard September 11th. So here we have a view. This was provided by the petitioner. You can see in the background, three-story apartment complex, which is where this accessory is located. Again, this is a survey showing you where that garage currently sits and where this board approved a variance for that location. We did not receive any public comment for this request. I'm sorry, I'm gonna show you these images that just confirm the height. So this is a closer-up image of the proposed elevations. As you can note on the right side of the screen, this is roughly 21 feet and 10 inches. So that is why they're before you today. Again, we did not receive any public comment for this request, and we do have the petitioner here in person.
Question, so they're saying that the doors and the windows won't fit. Those are like custom doors and windows.
That is correct. As I understand it, and I'll let the petitioner confirm, the doors that they are required, I guess with the structure as built, would not meet the building code if they are required to lower that. I will let the applicant confirm about the custom doors, how tall they are, etc.
Go back to the, the physical, actual, go on back to the...
I'll get back a couple of slides.
Okay.
Okay. Any more questions for the city?
So on the right side, it shows 21 feet. Is it a difference? Is it an offset? So what is on the left?
So the way that we measure the height of the accessory structure depends on the slope or the angle of the roof. With this being a flat roof, we have to measure to the highest point, and that is 21 feet. I don't know, I'm gonna go to the drawings to see if they call out on the other side. I can look at the staff report to see if it mentions that, but we have 10 feet to the drawing or to the railing over here, but for the total width or total height is 21 feet.
Oh, okay, no more questions?
All right.
I thought we were doing some math, I'm sorry. All right, we have Mr. Horton.
I'm Ken Horton. I'm the owner of that property.
State your address for us.
I'm sorry.
State your address for us, please.
I'm sorry.
State your address.
It's, I'm sorry, I had oxygen therapy this morning. And they set your pressure, and they set it off, and you can hardly hear anything.
Okay.
1029 Myrtlewood.
Okay.
I guess first, we like to live in Myrtlewood. My neighbor left, neighbor right. One's a VRBO, the other's a rental, and there's a lot of rental property in the neighborhood. The good thing is the neighborhood's changing. And one of the first things we wanted to do when we came to the neighborhood, my house had a, had a full kitchen, den up. It had a back entry door in the rear. Downstairs, it had a full kitchen down with the bedroom. There was three adults living in that house at the time I bought it. So the first thing we wanted to do was to get rid of the multitude of people living in the house. So that was the first thing we did. Second thing we did, we didn't want to have, you know, bathrooms, everything set up for accommodating renters. So that's the first thing we did, was got rid of that, because we wanted to make it a family home for us to live in. We just recently sold our house in Birmingham, which is in the process of selling. And our intent is to make this our full-time home. The house, it's big, but it's small. And when you have company, everything else, you need a place to store stuff. So we want a place to put our bicycles, you know, our exercise equipment, things like that, and our, park our cars. If you look at parking around Tuscaloosa isn't the easiest thing in the world. So if we can have a place to park, park our couple of cars, you know, that's good. So the other thing is just, when I bought this property five years ago, I could sit on my, you got, you don't have to pick up my back porch. I used to sit on my back porch, and I could see the University of Alabama Stadium. I could sit on my back porch at night before I went to bed, and I could see them turn the signs on, lights on, and I could see all that. Well, now, if you stand in the front of my house, you got a picture, I think, of the front of my house? If you stand in the front of my house now, you see this beautiful house, you know, three, two years ago, you couldn't see that. Now, that structure is behind that house. You cannot see my structure. My roof line at the top there is 27 and a half feet tall. My building is gonna be behind it, is gonna be 21 feet tall. If you're standing in front of my building and you're looking out, you cannot see that building. So, and now, what you built in my backyard, which should be a buffer, is you built a, an eyesore to what was a fabulous neighborhood historic. Second thing that's unique about this house, this is a house in a district and area where houses were built late 1800s, early 1900s. You know, that kind of rent, you know, timeline. The difference of this house, this is a brand-new house that was built in 2005, probably competed, completed in 2006. So it's not, it's a, it's a new house in an old section. The garage was already there, it was built in 2005, 2006. The house was already there. We just met with the historic district last week. That house is gonna have a new roof on it. They've approved a slate, slate roof. So we're gonna have a artificial slate roof that's been approved to go on that house. That's gonna take that whole neighborhood to a whole different level. Because now, instead of just having shingle roofing that everybody has, it's gonna take it to another level where it's gonna be kind of like a Mountain Brook area with the slate that's gonna be there now. All we've ever done with that property and that house is to improve upon it. And I think it's justice, if you look, I mean, a house just sold right down the street for a million five, you know? And I think I paid a half a million for the house when I bought it. So whatever we're doing in that neighborhood, we're doing it right. The second thing I'm seeing, neighbor across the street, neighbor two down, they are now starting to sell to people who want to live there and make these, their homes like we do. We like to live in there. We wanna build this structure on the back, and we wanna be able to enjoy it, and it'll be our home. The main reason we need it is just friggin' store stuff, you know? And we're trying to do it right. Something else that needs to be said, that the reason, the height is what it is, if we went with the 18 feet that you wanted me to do, it would look like a cut-up piece of whatever. Because to go the 18 feet that you wanted to go, we'd have to put six-foot windows in. And then we'd also have to, instead of an outside entrance, we'd have to have an inside entrance to access the inside. Because, you know, what we're trying to do is keep the beauty and the significance of the house in what it is. So if you've got eight-foot doors down, we're duplicating that eight-foot doors up. And we're custom building those doors to match up and down. Go ahead, you got a question?
I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Sorry, I, I mean, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
It's, it's for storage, correctly? Correct, in that you say this is for storage?
Storage, yeah.
Okay, I don't understand why you'd want that many windows in your storage.
Because I don't, I don't want to just build a garage. I want it to have, I want it to be...
Second question.
Yeah.
You don't wanna just, you wanna have light in it?
Well, it already has lighting. It has electrical, it already had electrical...
No, 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 I'm talking sunlight, because you have these windows.
Yeah, sunlight's nice. We'll probably go up there and work out, exercise.
Okay, so it's not, it's a workout room, it's not a storage room?
Well, they'll, you'll have a bicycle up there.
Okay.
I have my riding bike, and then I'll have my exercise bike.
Okay, second question. Is the chimney a fireplace, or is it just on the side of the building?
They, it's on the side. Downstairs, before we did this, it was completely finished. Had air conditioning, it had a stored, not, it was a game day place.
Is it a working chimney? Is it a working fireplace?
It's gas.
It's a gas fireplace?
Gas fireplace, it's not real fireplace. It's like a, I don't know what they call it, gas, synthetic gas or...
Curious.
But, you know, it's...
I just can't get, the windows.
When we, I mean, the French doors, you know, if you look behind me, if you look directly behind me, I am looking at the biggest eyesore that was ever built on planet Earth. And it goes three stories. It's got doors and balconies.
You have windows on the back of your storage area though, are there? The windows are only on the front.
No, there's nothing, on the, on that side where that ugliness is, it is just a wall.
Right.
There's a door, but there's nothing on that side, because there's nothing to look at. You don't wanna look out that side, because it's not pleasing.
So what you're trying to do is change your vi, your view when you come out of your house, you'll see your nice building as opposed to seeing the three-story apartments?
I wanna look at my nice neighbors and my, my nice backyard. I don't wanna look across the street, which you can't see there. The other thing, my gate is right there. You know what's at the back of my gate, probably 10, 15 feet away? A dumpster. And see, I did all that landscaping, all that landscaping...
That's on the back of your building, you have a place for a window.
That, that's on my back of my lot where the fence is. I did all that landscaping. I go out there and clean up trash every friggin' day.
Did y'all study any elevations or building sections with a roof line at the 18 feet?
Yeah, they've got, they've got surveys. They have an architectural drawing that shows it from the ground up.
With an 18-foot roof line that met our regulations to show us how that wouldn't work with your egress?
If we, you know, I, I don't wanna do that. It's, I do not wanna make, you, you ride around Tuscaloosa... It, it's, I do not wanna make, if, you, you ride around Tuscaloosa and you look at houses, and there's a bunch of garage houses on the back of houses. And what they did, they just added it on and there was no architectural design, it was just something they threw together out there. And they're falling apart, they look horrible. This is something that will be built, and it will be a lifetime architectural design that's gonna look good. Oh, thank you. I don't know, it's, we're trying to make it better. And, you know, we want to ride down, right now you ride down Covenant, there's a neighbor straight down the end of the street from me, that's redoing, just got his permission to redo everything. He's got a twenty-three-foot building, but the difference in his garage, his garage two-story is sitting right on the road.
Did you have?
And I think you've got a picture of that too. It's a, and he got approved, and he's right now gutting that twenty-three-foot two-story building. Mine's at least off the road, his is right on the road.
We're just trying to find the hardship. That's, that's what our, our duty is here.
The hardship.
Yes, sir. That, I, I guess you heard the beginning of our, um.
And it can't be financial and 'cause I won't to. That, it can't be your hardship. So we're trying to find the hardship, and custom windows and doors are not hardship, because custom means you can customize them to what you want them to be. Did you get a building per, do you have a building permit now for this?
No, that's a long story. I hired a contractor. When I hired that contractor, and we had conversations about this, I said, pull the permit, get the permit, post the permit. Asked him fifty-two million times, did they have a permit? They never pulled a friggin' permit, they just friggin' lied. So then I went down and met with them and said, look, we got an issue here. These people don't have a permit, so number one, we fired them, number two, we got left hanging with this, what we've got.
So, this was built under the contractors who you thought were doing the right thing, and they put you at twenty-one feet?
Exactly.
And so.
Well, they actually put it higher than that to start with. I said, there's no way, that's too high, too tall. So they brought it down. You know, y'all, I guess approved it for eighteen feet. Right now, if you look at the structure itself, if we went to the eighteen feet, you're not gonna get eight-foot doors. You're gonna get maybe six-foot doors. Downstairs, you're gonna have eight-foot garage doors that were already there. And upstairs, you're gonna have six-foot doors, they're probably not gonna be doors anymore, it's probably just gonna be windows. So it's not gonna have near, this is gonna have more of a New Orleans, you know.
So, Mr. Horton, so your, your hardship is that you had contractors that you thought were doing right by you, and then you found out that they had built a twenty-one-foot structure that you didn't know about, and so now you're having to come back and deal with it and.
We met with them, we've had, we've done, you know, we've met with the, last night, we met with, with this week, historic, I mean, we're going through the whole process.
Do you have a contractor now?
No, we, we, we put everything on hold. Until we get, we know exactly where we stand permit-wise and what is allowed to be built, we put everything on hold. Cause it, it, you know, depending, y'all approved it for eighteen, we're asking for, you know, three more feet, twenty-one.
But the minimum is seventeen, right? Is it eighteen or seventeen?
The minimum's eighteen, or the maximum is eighteen.
The maximum is eighteen.
The maximum height is eighteen.
And we thought it was gonna be seventeen?
Previous, it was confirmed that it was gonna be seventeen, and then when we received the drawings is when we noticed it was above that.
Okay, that's where I got the seventeen, is that we were told it was gonna, so your con, the original contractor told us it was gonna be seventeen, and then when they built it, they built it twenty-one?
So the original petitioner, contractor confirmed to us as staff that it was gonna be below eighteen feet, it'd be seventeen feet. They went and got the drawings for it, and it was confirmed to be what it is.
And I see these drawings here dated July twenty-third, so that's obviously got the drawings after the fact he's built it.
That's correct.
Yeah, I, I hired a contractor after the fact, got them to come in and put true measurements on exactly what we have.
That kinda backdates the fact that.
So that's, that's current.
By these drawings here, looking at, they're dated the twenty-third.
Okay, so.
July.
So then that would get us to where, you know, if I hired somebody and I trusted they were gonna do the right thing, and then they did something different than what they told us and told, so.
Cause we didn't have any drawings last month, and we know they didn't.
No.
So give us your name and your address, please.
Roseanne Fariolo. I live at ten twenty-nine Myrtlewood with Mr. Ken. I am a general contractor in the state of Florida. I came in after these, um, defunct contractors sold him a bu- bill of goods and built the structure to twenty-one feet, promising the board that it was gonna be at eighteen feet. We didn't know until after the meeting, when we hired an architectural engineer to do these drawings, that it was at, in fact, twenty-one feet. So, it is a unique building that if you brought it down three feet, you couldn't have a doorway going into ingress, egress that would be code. There is not a door that would be, so that is a hardship right there. Um, the other thing is that there's no buffer in the back of convent where there's, there's no balance between the three-story structure and, and Mr. Ken's house. The balance would be where this accessory building conforms to the three-story structure in the back and his, his current house. So it's, it's kind of like a blend of the two, bringing it together. There's a two-story house that's two houses south of Mr. Ken's house that is huge, humongous, that dwarfs all of these structures. This is not a structure that's gonna dwarf it. He's trying to better the neighborhood, he's trying to make the building pristine. If you have a problem with a door or a window, we're not opposed to making it smaller as long as you can have ingress and egress in, into the building.
So you couldn't get a six-eight door in based off the ten-foot, three-foot, six and less, the twenty-one, that's where your struggle is to get a six-foot, eight-door in? What you've got left with your roof structure? And I assume you probably have mechanical in there? Is it overhead mechanical?
N- no, it's not, it's, it was gonna be a mini-split.
A mini-split unit, is it just open, open roof structure?
It's open roof structure.
So, and I know city code requires to have, you know, fire exit of some type for building permits, so.
It's already.
It's gonna be a, it's gonna be a struggle to get a, with that math to get the door.
Okay, so that will give us what?
They're showing a seven-eleven door, I believe.
But they'll, they'll be for an exterior door, right?
He said for an exterior door?
Did someone make the statement earlier that an interior door could?
No, the exterior door would not meet code.
But you could have an interior door?
Yeah, you can have inside doors, this is for door for, uh.
Get out.
Getting out of the building.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the door on the side, it won't work.
Well, well, any, any way that you would shorten the roof line, you wouldn't be able to have a door that would conform to code.
Okay, so, so by code, do we have to have an, an exterior door on the second floor?
Yes.
For fire, I think, I don't know.
That is a great question for, it's, it's fire code.
Cause that's, that's my question. I mean, cause you have windows. So, if we're just talking about getting to the second floor, we could technically still enter through the bottom door stairs inside.
Their stairs are exterior.
Their stairs are exterior.
But at, at this point.
Oh, you're saying.
We have to find a variance, right? So, I can't use a, I mean, we can't find a hardship saying, well, I had a contractor, I asked him for his permit, he said, I have it, I have it, I have it. At that point, it's really on me. I mean, cause he can tell me I have it, but until I see that yellow sign posted from the city of Tuscaloosa, I can't use that. Now, that's something that will, I would think will be, will be between the petitioner and litigation with that previous contractor. And if it causes you a financial issue, roll it over to that previous contractor. But, we, we still have to see a hardship. And, I mean, it's beautiful, the design is beautiful, but it, it's hard to, if you can just point us out a hardship, like before, I think when we approved this last month, I think we were putting this back on the same footprint of an existing structure previously. So that was something that we could work with.
So lowering the roof line, lowering it to eighteen, they would not be able to put a door in that is code? If they brought it down to the eighteen, in terms of having a door that would meet code, is that what?
If you wanna enter from outside.
That is what the petitioner has stated on the application. I'm not sure if this is something that our building division has actually looked at since we haven't gone forward with any of the permitting since all of this kind of started originally with the stop work order.
Okay, so this seems like this is another one that might need to be continued to where they can get the answers to this in terms of, um, from our, from code that if they can, do they need to put an interior door and some windows that they can open and get out and go down the door?
Have they submitted, have y'all submitted this to the building department for, just a preliminary review?
No.
Maybe that's.
I think that would be the route, that you need to go there and find, let them help you determine what's code, what can be done, because we're making a decision, you know, what we, my Google degree, and so it's, you know, so I, you're gonna have to go to them and give them, let them give you the expert opinion of what you can do, and how can you, if you lowered it to eighteen, so when you bring in your contractor, this, you know for sure what you can do.
I think in addition to, yeah, just building elevations, a section that shows the existing truss heights of the first floor, and then, you know, your minimum, door height, your trusses for the second floor and your roof line, and if you've got that section, and we're still over eighteen feet, then, then there's your hardship right there.
Well, that was part of the problem.
Well, I think that's what that architectural drawing shows.
That was, that was part of the problem, because it was an existing structure there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And the existing structure was a gable roof.
But I, what she's saying is this architect can give you a cut section through this building where you can look at the inside and see these dimensions, not just the exterior dimension, you can actually see, he can give you a section very easy on this right here.
Seven-eleven on your door may be what you want, but that may not be the minimum for an egress door, so I would just challenge your architect to, to give you a section and, and.
Well, they.
With that minimum.
They, if you look, if you look at the, the original struct, do you have a picture of the original garage? The original garage, um, is, was big, I mean, it had a, it had an A-frame, it was a big A-frame house.
It was a gable roof.
It was a gable roof, it was huge, with two-car garage and, that, that lower section.
That is, that is the orig- original section and the measurements. It's ten foot ten to the, the roof deck of the first floor.
Yeah, that's original. Yeah, that's original.
Yeah.
So we took that roof off and went up, and then we left the original rafters, and we left the brick, the original as well. Cause we got, we found the brick, we got it in Stellamark. So we just gotta go get the brick to finish it, so we brick to match what's in front.
That's not what they're asking. The original structure had a ten-foot-ten first floor, and that's what they built up on too.
And we're just trying to get an eight-foot door in so we can go into the facility.
Well, you're trying to get a door of code in.
Yeah, an eight-foot door isn't the answer.
The eight-foot door is not the answer.
I mean, you may could get a six-foot door to fit, I mean, once again, I think the hardship, I believe, taking these to the building department, engineering, fire department, let them look at it, working with the architect to see, to try to get a hardship, cause I agree with the board, I've, I've yet to see the hardship in, in the situation.
And that, and that's the, that's the deal, so our answer to you is, we recommend, you know, maybe if you wanna, if you wanna continue this and go to the, to building and fire and find out the minimums that you can have, so if you reduce it to eighteen, what are the minimum doors? And get that answer, and then come back to us and ask for the hardship if you can.
So we need to meet with the building department?
Yes.
Well, there's a building department.
No, they are not, they are not.
Okay, we need to meet with the fire department and the building department.
The building department will give you the fire codes.
That's correct.
Is that what he needs to kind of get idea?
We're supposed to meet with historic on.
So will that make us go into the next month for the, the next meeting here?
Yes.
Cause we got historic coming up in.
Yes.
Okay.
So you would've met with historic, and if you can get back, and then get back on our agenda for September, and then you will know, you should know from everybody, and you should be able to have had a contractor and architect, everybody look at it and kind of present us with, okay, this is the har- that we did, and this is, this is the only.
Let me ask one other question that we got concerning going on right now. We had a storm like a week ago, and they had put just black paper on top of it.
They put felt paper on top.
And it, they just put tar paper, and it just blew it off. So right now, when it rains, everything, the wood is just getting rotten, the electrical's getting messed up, cause the house had electrical, AC, everything. But everything's getting deteriorated now because there's nothing on top to protect it. I mean, is there any way you can just put just a peel and stick, something on the roof to keep it from leaking, until we get through this process?
Yeah, I mean, the deck's on there, I mean.
Not, not a roof, just peel and stick.
Yeah, he's just talking about the peel and stick, just, uh, the felt.
It'll dry it in.
Paper to dry it.
Keep it dried in.
I mean, here, I'm gonna go to the city, I mean, I don't really see that being an issue, but it'd be at your cost, I mean, that's another cost, if this doesn't get approved, that you're, you're taking on, that if you gotta lower that deck, lower that, that's, that's just more money, but that's.
Yeah, I was, since there was a stop work order issued.
And the French doors have already.
That would be the, our building department's call.
That would be who?
The building department.
Okay, so he, he's, he's saying if the, if you can talk with the building department, explain that, since they put the stop work order, then they would be the ones that would allow you to do that. You can, when you contact them, not us.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thanks guys.
You gotta ask for the, Mr. Horton, gotta ask for the continuance.
Ask for continuance.
Can you, can I extend this forward, please?
I make a motion that we continue this case.
Second.
And.
All in favor?
When's, when will we come back again?
September.
September?
If you have all your information.
And when is y'all's next meeting?
September.
End of September.
September.
September twenty-third, we can work with you, I'll reach out.
Jim, what about the, the historic thing?
That's on the eleventh. On the eleventh.
That's after?
Four.
Before.
It's before us. September eleventh is the date for the historic district.
And y'all are before that.
After, we're after.
We'll talk to you about it tomorrow, we'll get it straightened out with you.
Alright. Oh, all in favor, did we vote, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to continue, approved. Okay, seventy-three twenty-four.
Alright, next case is ZBA seventy-three twenty-four. Julie Chung petitions for a variance from the freestanding sign regulations to utilize an existing sign on the property at forty-three hundred McFarland Boulevard East. It's on BH and Council District Seven. So here we have the zoning of the property as well as that's aerial view. This is an image of the sign in question. It's this large sign here. And then here we have a couple of images of that sign in question. This is also a sign, uh, that they received a permit for that's located on site. The applicable regulations, we're looking at two separate code sections. Section twenty-four one thirty-five discusses the freestanding sign ordinance. It prohibits freestanding signs from exceeding twenty-five feet in height, and there are also a restriction on one per parcel. And we're also looking at section twenty-four one thirty-eight, it's talking about non-conforming, illegal and abandoned signs. Uh, this sign was considered abandoned by city staff because it remained vacant for a period more than ninety days. Uh, the previous, uh, business went out of business sometime November of last year, so it exceeded that time as well. The petitioner is requesting a variance to utilize an existing non-conforming and abandoned freestanding sign. Per the petitioner, this sign will market the business on site. Uh, like I mentioned, city staff informed the property owner that the freestanding sign in question, it was utilized by the previous business, was considered to be abandoned, since it had been closed for more than six months. We, the city staff, uh, told the petitioner that the sign needed to be removed to comply with the sign ordinance. The freestanding sign is considered to be non-conforming as there is already an existing sign on site. The petitioner, uh, did provide this image, if they were approved to keep and utilize the existing sign, this is what you would see. We did not receive any public comment for this application, and we do have a representative here in person.
Any questions for the city? So should the previous, um, owner have taken this sign down or?
This is a situation we see quite a bit. It, the ninety-day period essentially gives opportunity for a new tenant or a new owner to come in and utilize if it's a sign that is non-conforming. Uh, so if this would've moved a little bit quicker, if they would've, you know, been within that ninety-day window, pulled the correct permits, because it is abandoned and also non-conforming, uh, that is why it's here before you today.
And did you say they had two other signs on the property?
They, I'm gonna go back, they have one other freestanding sign, but they do have building and wall signs. This is their freestanding sign. That's another part of the ordinance, we would allow, since this lot only has one street frontage, one freestanding sign. So the one that you see here, and then they do have building and wall signage located around the building.
This is back behind those?
That's correct, yeah, this is located, so this is their dumpster located back here, and then this large sign is, is still on site.
So the current, the shorter freestanding side and the building side, that's fine?
That's fine. Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, Julie Chung.
Good evening. Julie Chung, forty-three hundred McFarland Boulevard East. Just petitioning to have this sign utilized to attract customers and also clean it up. The previous owner had left it abandoned, I guess, and it just looks really bad on our property. Since we've considered to redo the whole restaurant and all new signage there, I just asked to just do the sign to look, to match the rest of the building around there and to attract some new customers off the interstate since it's so high up to help promote our business. That's basically it. And just to clean it up. We'll paint the poles, add new panels, lighting, LED. The pole is really rusted out, looks really bad on the property considering that we cleaned this property up very well. Previous owners left it abandoned for so long, it just looks bad when you pull out from the interstate down. You know, we're right there off the interstate and that doesn't look good in our city.
Okay, again, we've come back to the hardship of, of this, of this sign. And what is the hardship? In terms of having the sign. Do you hear a heart?
Well, first of all, the two signs on the property is not allowed.
Ma'am?
Two signs on that property are not allowed. You're only allowed to have one freestanding sign.
You can only have one? Okay.
And this particular sign was abandoned and the height, I mean, I don't see a hardship to keep this sign.
Okay. I mean.
And I can understand if you're right beside an interstate, but you're, I mean, we're.
A good bit off.
A good bit off interstate property and your main traffic feed can see which, what the signs you already have as is, so.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Chung? Thank you. Anything else you'd like to say?
No, I'm good. I just.
Thank you, Ms. Chung. All right. All right, is there anybody here to speak for or against this? You had some, yeah, you can sit back down. Anybody here to speak for? So we don't have anybody signed up to speak for or against, so we'll close public comment and go to board comment. Mr. Rollins?
Uh, yes, but I fail to see the hardship. I'm not in favor.
I fail to see the hardship as well.
I agree with my fellow board members. I don't see a hardship here.
I, I'm, I'm agreeing with the board members as well.
Yeah, I agree as well.
Okay, we'll close board comments. I'll read the motion. Julie Chung petitions for a variance for the freestanding sign regulations to utilize an existing freestanding sign on the property located at forty-three hundred McFarland Boulevard East, Zone BH, Council District Seven. Voting with Mr. Rollins?
No.
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 Motion failed.
Next case is ZBA seventy-four, twenty-four. Carson Vines petitions for a use variance to allow an accessory structure to be used as a dwelling unit on the property at forty-two, fourteen, Fourth Avenue. This is Zone R-two in Council District Seven. So here we have the zoning of the property as well as its aerial view. This is a view of the house, the house in front of the accessory structure. This image here, you can see the accessory structure located to the rear of the property. The applicable regulations for accessory structures, as you can see, number three accessory structures are not allowed to be occupied at any time as a dwelling unit. The petitioner is requesting a variance from those regulations to occupy that accessory structure. City staff was notified that an additional power meter was being installed on site. This is what prompted the petitioner to ask for a variance and to continue to use the accessory structure as a dwelling. Per the petitioner, this structure has been occupied or been used as a dwelling since nineteen sixty-seven. It's been furnished as a single family dwelling and states that if they were denied, they would have to unhouse a multi-year tenant. Per the petitioner, the variance requires no new construction. There's no changes overall to the square footage of the house and there will be no change to the lot lines. Here we have some images provided from the petitioner. On the left, that was a previous condition. They have made some upgrades to the accessory structure. And this are the, these are those upgrades on the interior as well. And then here we have some property information that was also provided for the petitioner. So going back to the first image, that would be building number one. And then the second image, that accessory structure would be building number two. So they provided this just to show when those units were built and square footage of each. We did not receive any public comment for this request and we do have the applicant here in person.
Okay, this is two, the both sep, the first one?
Both separate, yes. Both separate on the same property. And I'll go back to the initial image. So building number one, building number two.
I just saw the six and I was thinking we were still talking about the little house and I was like, six rooms in there?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm with you. Any more questions for?
So what triggered the?
What triggered it?
Request for the variance, yes, sir.
So they came in to apply for electrical upgrades or for an electrical permit. Part of our approval is that a house must remain a single family dwelling. When the building department went out, they have, I guess, and I'll let the petitioner speak to this more clearly, but essentially, power was just running to the building up front. They pulled a permit, they split the power, said there would be power. Not that there was previously not power, but now this second unit would have its own meter. So that's what prompted this.
So the, the code from the nineteen seventies, prior to that code, was this allowed?
Prior to the nineteen seventy-two ordinance, I'm not familiar with that code, so I don't know if that would have allowed.
Go ahead and say you weren't born then. That's what we hear you saying.
So are, are there any circumstances in the city that you're aware of that have two properties or two dwellings on one residential lot that have two separate electrical or plumbing or?
So we do have some zoning districts around the city where this is a permitted use. And this zoning district is not a permitted use. Off the top of my head, I'm, I'm unaware of, of any that have been approved by city staff. Now, if it has been operating prior to that nineteen seventy-two ordinance, at that point it'd be illegal, non-conforming, so it's possible that exists. Whenever we have a building permit for a situation like this, sometimes these things are triggered, so that's why they're here before you.
Most of the time too, where we see those is in the historic districts. That's really the only places. And sometimes over in West Tuscaloosa as well, where we see these older homes that were built prior to nineteen seventy-two where they had multiple dwelling units on there.
Well, this is way before, it's at fifty and what, sixty-seven?
Fifty and sixty-seven.
So not a possibility to subdivide the land, make it two separate lots?
The lot configuration would be far outside of what the planning commission typically will approve. Also, there would be a number of other factors that were triggered that would be far more costly to the applicant anyways. But more than anything, in order to carve that out, it would be a lot configuration variance, which planning commission typically won't approve for something of that nature.
And this, this is the lot showing the two structures. One of the things that the image doesn't quite capture, you can see this car, there are two driveways located on site, so there, there are two driveway entries onto the property.
So it's set up to operate like two separate houses because of the driveways and, are there two mailboxes or mail addresses?
I'll let the applicant confirm.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Carson Vines?
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak for you. I appreciate the work you did, Mr. Bowen, to prepare this. As he mentioned.
State your name and your address for it.
I'm sorry. My name is Carson Vines, forty-two, fourteen, Fourth Avenue. I should note that this property is owned by Chris and Mary Bell Gagnon. As their property manager, they've authorized me to speak on their behalf this evening. As he stated, this is one parcel with two structures. They do have separate mailboxes, they do have separate driveways. Best we can tell, this property has been operating in this way. As you can see, those records from nineteen fifty, nineteen sixty-seven. I actually couldn't find anything in the code from nineteen seventy-two either. It was a little murky, but I also, but I would imagine that there should be some case for an allowed non-conforming use. In regards to how this issue arose and the repairs that were being completed, we did have some electrical issues at the property that stemmed from using one can, one meter from the property. And obviously, electrical problems are a number one concern of ours as a property manager. And so we sought to split those into two meters with two separate power services and also upgrade the power service from one hundred amps to two hundred amps to make it safer to run HVAC and everything else. So in that, in that process of pulling that permit, the city inspector drove by, put the stop work order, which is why I'm here before you tonight. I do also want to say that the, the structure has not been changed in any way by Spartan in the course of our renovations. We began renovations in October of twenty twenty-one and it, it is, the property's been tinted since April of twenty twenty-two. We, it was already plumbed, had HVAC, had electrical. It was already being used as a dwelling unit. I can't say for certain exactly when that started. I do know that it is atypical for that to be noted as a second structure rather than just a shed or storage in CRS unless it was being used as a dwelling unit. But I know as far back as twenty thirteen, there are photos of this structure functioning the way that it is now. As far as the hardship, I think, I think the, the argument there, in addition to the fact that it poses no, no change to the neighborhood, there are several other structures within a three block radius that look just like this, that have power and that have HVAC. We also have a multi, a multi-year tenant in place that would obviously be unhoused if this were to suddenly be not allowed to continue as a additional dwelling unit on the property, which is a concern. But the secondary concern in terms of unhousing is that we would then have to designate that structure as a value-added structure on this one parcel, which means that the tenant in the primary structure in the front of the lot would probably see an increase in rent and could be unhoused themselves based on not being able to withstand that increase in rent. So without belaboring the point, I think that this structure is set up to serve as a parcel with two dwelling units in the way that we have renovated it and retained that, and retained something that's been going on since before the code that any of us can find. And with respect to the tenant, I think what we're attempting to do is preserve the whole, the two homes here that the tenant has and has been enjoying. And pursuant to that, the electrical upgrades that we were making in splitting that meter was to create a, a safer and a better structure for the tenant. I appreciate your time.
Any questions?
I have, is it possible that that house could be moved? I know. Well, I'm having a hard time finding, finding a hardship. The fact that their rent might go out, go up, we certainly can't take that into consideration at all. I think Jonathan or Mr. Bowen said something about legal non-conforming because of the age, that would be the only thing that I could see.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what it is. To me, that's what it is.
Yeah, I would agree.
Since seventy, prior to seventy-two, it's been there and nothing, the only thing, it would have still been operating had, had they not come for a permit to try to make it safer. So.
You're just a property manager, correct?
Yes.
So if the house ever changed ownership, would this have to be revisited or could it be revisited at that time?
And if this were approved, that's right, variances don't transfer with the land, with the ownership. It would be something they would have to come back and ask for.
Okay. So if they're gonna do something different with it, they'd have to come back to us after they got moved? Okay, any other questions for this petitioner?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anybody signed, no one signed up to speak for or against at this time? Okay. So we'll close public comment and go to board comment. Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, I have no issues with it. I can see the hardship being that it predated the nineteen seventy-two ordinance. And there have been no changes to the footprint or anything like that, so I'm.
I'll have to agree with Mr. Rollins. Yes, I, I really can see that because it was that way before the ordinance. I'll agree with that.
And that's considered a hardship, predating the ordinance of nineteen seventy-two. The house was built in nineteen sixty. So I can see the hardship in this, well, the house was built fifty, the main house, and the other house was built in sixty-seven. So that was way before the ordinance came out.
Yeah, I would agree with the fellow board members.
I agree as well.
Okay. Close board comments. I'll read the motion. ZBA dash seventy-four dash twenty-four. Carson Vines petitions for a use variance to allow an accessory structure to be used as a dwelling unit on the property located at forty-two, fourteen, Fourth Avenue, Zone R-two, R-dash-two, Council District Seven. Voting with Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next case is ZBA seventy-five, twenty-four. Michael and Angela Chandler petition for a special exception to allow a home occupation two thousand eight Antietam Avenue, Zone R-one, Council District Three. So here we have the zoning of the property as well as the aerial view. This is a view of the house, front side of the house from the street. And we are looking at the home occupations, which is found in our special exception ordinance. The petitioner is requesting a special exception to use a downstairs basement of their home as a small office to provide individual and counseling services. Per the petitioner, there will be a maximum of one person or one client per day, either four o'clock or four-thirty. Clients will park in the driveway and the petitioner will screen the clients prior to those in-person appointments. Here we have an image that was provided by the applicant to show that less than five hundred square feet of the house will be used by the clients. They will enter through the back door, the rear door that you see highlighted here. And then here we have just a site plan showing the lobby, restroom accommodations, as well as the counseling office as well. This is a ver, an image of the inside of the counseling office. And then of the downstairs in general with the restroom. We did receive one public comment in opposition to this request and we do have the petitioners here in person.
Any questions for the city?
Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Angela Chandler and I live at two thousand eight Antietam Avenue, Tuscaloosa. Okay, I'm a full-time school counselor and a mother and I would, my original intention is to use this property, to use that space in order to provide virtual counseling services in addition to my role full-time as a school counselor for Tuscaloosa City Schools. However, there are some, in, some child clients that would really benefit from the in-person services. I'm not sure if you're aware, but there is a dire need for more mental health practitioners in our community. As a school counselor, when I make referrals for children to receive services and I'm not, you know, I'm ethically not allowed to provide any outside services to the students that I serve in the school setting. But when I refer, I refer these children to other practitioners in the area, they are met with wait lists and they're not able to receive services. So I would like to be able to see some of those clients individually in person. We have, the area is fully, you know, it's separated from the rest of our home by two doors. You can see the bottom door of the stairway and then another door, both which can be locked. This would not inconvenience my neighbors in any way, shape or form. It has a completely separate entrance to that basement area. It would only allow the substantial benefits to the community of having another mental health practitioner that can have, serve in-person clients, which would be children in person.
And I read that you would only have one client at a time?
Right. Right. And due to my work schedule, I don't think I would be able to.
Park in the driveway?
Yes, they would.
You're not planning on having signage or?
No. I considered just a small, but I'm, if, if there would be anything, it would be a vinyl decal on those back glass doors, which I'm not sure if you have an image of, but it's like double doors leading to my backyard. I have a lot of, which, that's during January and that's, I think a few years ago, our real estate pictures. But now the area, there's ample vegetation and different things that kind of shield the whole area. It's, it's a really nice backyard area. It's, it's a really nice backyard area and I think it would.
Any other questions?
It would be one client at a time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Chandler.
Thank you so much.
We don't have anyone signed up to speak for or against. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak for or against this petition?
I have a question for Mr. Bowen.
Okay, you can come and speak, sir, and then go ahead and ask the question.
Did you mention in your introduction, which you could have, that there was an email or a letter, email in support or opposition?
Yes, there was one email in opposition.
Okay, thank you, I thought.
Good evening, Harry Gabriel. I live at 618 Vicksburg Drive in the same subdivision, so I'm very empathetic to what you're trying to do, Ms. Chandler, and, and don't argue with that. I just want to make sure that if she wanted to do more than one client at a time or there was increased traffic in the neighborhood, that she would have to come before this board again to ask for that. And the reason I ask that is that our neighborhood has continued to have homes that have been sold for rental property and we've had, you know, game day kind of renting and all that kind of stuff. So there's more and more traffic in our neighborhood and so I'm perfectly fine with the one car parked in driveway and all that kind of stuff. But my, I guess my concern is if that goes greater than that, will we have a chance to come back and have another discussion?
So we can make a stipulation or something like that? Thank you so much. Anyone else like to speak for or against? Okay, we'll close public comment at this time and begin with board comment, Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, I have no issues with the petition.
I am in favor and I do think it, it is needed in our community. I appreciate the fact that it's going to be one, one person, one car in the driveway. Should not be a disruption to the neighborhood.
I'm in agreement with my fellow board members. I feel like that this is just serving a need and it's not looking for something, group therapy or anything of that nature. It's more of a single, individual, one-on-one situation, so I'm in favor.
I'm in favor as well. Definitely see the need and think it'd be a great asset.
I'm in favor with the limitations on hours and clients and agree that if it went above one client at a time, it sounds like the hours would be either four to 4:30 or 4:30 to five, that we would need to revisit that just to make sure that we don't have an overburden of traffic in any neighborhoods.
So. I think limiting the client, number of clients, I don't know about the hour, how, how the hours.
I wouldn't be in favor of limiting the hours. I don't see that one person coming in would be a disruption to the neighborhood.
In our opinion, but I understand.
Yeah, my comment on the hours was if we limit it to one hour, you're, you're not getting multiple people, like one person there this hour, one person there the next hour, one person there the next hour.
So, okay, I think, so we'll close board comment. I'll read the motion. Michael and Angela Chandler petition for a special exception to allow a home occupation on the property located at 2008 Antietam Avenue, Zone R1, Council District 3. Limitation, one client per session, voting with Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion approved. Okay, at this time, we request a break before we go into our short-term rental, just a 10-minute break. We'll resume, we'll resume at 6:45. Give us a break. Beginning with STRs.
Let's go ahead. ZBA 7624 Charles Cobb petitions for a special exception to allow a short-term rental of a property at 82 Brookhaven Drive, Zone R2, Council District 6. So here we have the zoning of the property as well as that aerial view. This is an image of the surrounding short-term rentals in the general area. And then here we have an image of the house as well as the parking pavement. So the request is for a special exception for a short-term rental. Charles Cobb will be the primary contact in case of an emergency. The petitioner does not have previous experience with short-term rentals. The house will be equipped with a security system, doorbell cameras, door sensors, and smoke detectors. And when the property, or when the owner is not there, he will be staying 20 minutes away from the property should there be an emergency. This house has two bedrooms and one bathroom. It is not, or it is owner-occupied. The petitioner is requesting four adults, two vehicles. If approved, staff does recommend four adults and two vehicles. To my knowledge, we did not receive any public comment for this application and we do have the representative here in person.
Okay, great. Mr. Cobb? Oh, any questions for the city? Okay.
Good afternoon, my name's Charles Cobb, 82 Brookhaven Drive.
Okay. Are you the owner of the house?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And so, have you had a previous experience with short-term rentals?
I have not.
Okay. So do you have your rules and regulations listed?
Yes, I do. I actually have them printed out right here.
Okay, but do you have them posted in the home?
Yes, I do.
Okay. All right, and you'll be 20 minutes away when someone is renting the house?
Yes, ma'am.
And you'll be the person that they call?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Okay, that's all the questions.
Thank you.
All right. And we don't have anybody signed up to speak for or against. Anyone in the audience that'd like to speak for or against? Okay, we'll close public comment and we'll start with board comment. Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, I have no issues with it. Do something in favor.
Turn your mic on, Linda.
I'm also in favor. No, no problems with this.
Okay, I agree as well with my fellow board members.
Yeah, there's several other in the area, so I really see no issue with this.
Okay, we'll close board comment. I'll read the motion. ZBA-76-24 Charles Cobb petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 82 Brookhaven Drive, Zone R2, Council District 6. Four adults, two vehicles for 30 nights and one year probation. Beginning with Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Board, board, very quickly, just for the record, that Ms. Holt was not present. She had to accuse herself, that's why there were four on the voting.
So I need to say that? You just said it.
Yes, I just said it, but as long as you agree with that, I think we're fine.
Ms. Holt did abstain. You guys have to say that for me. All right, we're ready for the next one?
Next short-term rental is ZBA 7924 Carlos Akoa petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental at One Arlington Drive. This property is Zone R3 in Council District 7. So here we have the zoning of the property as well as the aerial view. Here we have an image of the surrounding adjacent short-term rentals. This is a view of the primary structure from the street. And then here we have an image of the parking area. Carlos Akoa will be the primary contact in case of an emergency. The property owner will be located in Cottondale if there is an emergency. Petitioner does have active real estate, or has an active real estate license, but they do not have experience managing short-term rentals. The house will be equipped with the exterior cameras, keypad locks, and a fence. The house has four bedrooms and four bathrooms. It is not owner-occupied and it will remain vacant when it is not being rented short-term. Petitioner is requesting four adults and two vehicles. Petitioner is requesting four adults and two vehicles. If approved, staff recommends four adults and two vehicles. We did not receive any public comment for this request, and we do have the applicant here in person.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the city? Mr. Carlos?
Good afternoon, more members. My name is Carlos Ochoa. I reside in seventy-seven thirty-one Forest Valley Road. I also do have a copy of the regulations and rules for that property in mind. And we're just requesting for, you know, to allow a use of a short-term rental on that property.
Okay. And you're the real, you're a real estate agent?
Yes, ma'am, correct.
And so you don't have any experience with short-term rental, but?
No, ma'am.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Carlos.
Thank you.
We don't have anyone signed up to speak for or against. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this property? Okay, at this time, we'll close public comment, and we'll start with board comment. Mr. Rollins?
I have no issues. I'm in favor.
It seems like a very reasonable request. I'm in favor.
I think so. It's a very reasonable, especially with starting out, first-time experience. You're asking for less than what the house could possibly hold, so I'm in agreement with that.
I'm in agreement as well.
I'm in favor.
Okay. At this time, we'll close board comment. I'll read the motion. ZBA dash seventy-seven dash twenty-four, Carlos Ochoa petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at One Arlington Drive, Zoned R-three, Council District Seven, four adults, two vehicles, thirty nights, a one-year probation, beginning with Mr. Rollins voting?
Yes.
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 Motion approved.
Next case is ZBA seventy-eight, twenty-four. Stacy Wilcox petitions for a special exception for a short-term rental. This is at seventeen Forest Drive, Zoned R-one, Council District Five. Here we have the zoning of the property as well as aerial view. We do not have any active short-term rentals in the area. I will point out, just last month, the property located here did receive approval. It's likely the reason it didn't pop up is they have not gone through revenue to get their license quite yet, so it wouldn't show up in our zoning layers. Here we have a view of the house from the street, and then a view of that parking area. Stacy Wilcox and Tyler Wilcox will be the primary contacts in case of an emergency. They will be available twenty-four hours a day. They do not have any experience managing short-term rentals. The house will be equipped with security cameras and keypad locks. This property is owner-occupied, and the property owners will stay with friends when the property is being rented short-term. The house has three bedrooms and two bathrooms. Petitioner is requesting six adults and three vehicles. If approved, staff recommends six adults and three vehicles. We did receive at least four public comment in opposition to this request, and we do have the petitioner here in person.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wilcox? Mr. Wilcox?
Yes, Stacy Wilcox, seventeen Forest Drive, Tuscaloosa, Alabama. Like I said, I mean, owner-occupied. My son's in there right now. Actually temporarily, my daughter and her husband are in the house temporarily until they move to their house in Birmingham. But first time doing this, came back in front of, back in December of last year, was turned down. Would, you know, like to be reconsidered because we don't want to do the long-term rental. Because just with short-term rules, you have more control over your house versus long-term rules. Also, last time was our first effort doing this. We also went back, and when we looked, after we were denied last time, and we looked at Airbnb and VROB, we did find some houses within four-tenths of a mile in one direction, and half a mile in another direction, just by looking at those sites. And so it was, we didn't, at that point in time, didn't understand why we might have got turned down. I would understand if you're trying to protect a larger area, but we still had, you know, houses within a one-mile radius of us. So that's why we're back in front, saying, hope to be reconsidered for the short term because we don't want to do the long term just from a rules and regulations that we can control the property better. And plus, we also think the short term, you know, you get outside, you know, the area of people coming in, spend adding revenue to the, you know, Tuscaloosa economy.
Did your children live in the home at that time, or was it vacant?
No, we've always, since we bought the house about a year ago, it's always been occupied. My, my daughter just moved in there because they were in Jackson. They have a job in Birmingham, but they're in there just temporarily until they find a house in Birmingham. So it's just my son in there, you know, permanently, daughter and her husband temporarily, just for about a couple of months.
The one we approved last month was it four-two, or what was it?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The one we approved last month, was it, was it six-three-four-two? What did we?
Eight-four, I believe.
It was eight-four?
Mm-hmm. I'll double-check then.
Yeah.
Sounds like a party hat.
Will you be the contact person?
I think that, yes, myself and my son.
And you reside here in Tuscaloosa?
No, I reside, I reside in Jackson, Mississippi.
And your son is here in Tuscaloosa?
Yes, he lives in the house.
Will he come stay with you in Mississippi, or will he?
No, he's got friends here that he will stay with. So like, even if something happened, he would be on-site. And I would say the house I got approved last month was basically two houses down from me.
Have you short-term rented it yet?
This would be my first opportunity.
Any more questions for the petitioner? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We don't have anybody signed up to speak for or against. Did we find out how many?
Yep. I apologize about that board. It was four-two.
Yeah, we don't do eight-four.
I'm sorry about that.
Okay, come on up.
My name is William Stakem, and I live at three-three zero seven Eighth Street East. When you pull out of our street, you are directly in front of this particular house. Now, the street that we live on is a one-lane street for two-way traffic, so it's a little difficult getting in and out sometimes now. If anyone parks on the street in either direction, it creates basically a hazard. Now, we bought the house years ago as a single-family residence in a single-family resident neighborhood. And we would like to keep it as a single-family resident neighborhood. The house that you just mentioned that had been approved last month, we got no notification at all that that was even in the plan. The notification, I apologize, the notification that we just got for this one, I don't know if it was for this house or a house that's on the street that we live on. But I stand here opposed to any house being approved for temporary rental, short-term rentals, whatever you want to call it, in a single-family resident ne- neighborhood and area. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak for or against? You want to, you come up, come back up to me.
I do know, and I understand the concerns, but as a rule from a short-term rental, your, your people are not allowed to park on the street. They would have to be forced to park in the driveway. And I, my objective is not to devalue the neighborhood whatsoever. You know, as, as a short-term rental, you're actually needing to put more effort into the house to constantly appeal to, like said, to somebody to rent it. And plus, we are also owner-occupied, so it's not like it's going to be nobody there and not taken care of it during this timeframe.
Thank you.
I just have to say this again, like I've said in many meetings before. If there's any issue at all with a short-term rental, whether it's noise, whether it's cars that you think are parked on the street that should not be, whether it's trash, please, please do call three-one-one and let them know so that the city is aware that there is a problem. Because this is, if it's approved, this is a one-year approval. They would have to come back, and if there are any issues against or any complaints.
Can I come back up?
Yes, come back up.
Sure.
As you pull out off the street that we live on, there's a house directly perpendicular. These people park in the street. I have called the city, I've called the police department about the issue that it causes because there's a, as you come off of University Boulevard, there's a slight hill right there at that Chateau Apartments, I guess it is. And it creates a hazard. You literally have to pull over to the side if a car is parked there to allow another car to get by, so.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm specifically referring to short-term rentals. If you own the home, you can park wherever there's a legal parking spot.
I understand that, but short-term rental located in this area, if you don't think that it's going to be an issue when football season is here and the way some short-term rentals have the potential to act, I may have some Florida, I may have some land in Florida I'll save when the tide goes out.
Well, I say that, well, the thing about short-term rental, it's the one thing that you really do have a say and some control in. And the way you have say and control is if they do, if you call the police, and that's documented that the police came out, if three-one-one is called and you complain, and we have documentation of the complaints, when they come back for renewal, they usually don't get renewed. Any type of complaint, you are non-renewed because that's what we don't want for short-term rental, is for it to be a nuisance.
Well, I have a complaint already then.
But that's not a short-term rental that you were complaining on. You were complaining on a neighbor or, because there's only one short-term rental, and it just got approved last, last month. So whatever you're complaining on is not a short-term rental in your neighborhood. It might be a rental, but it's not a short-term rental.
Well, I'm complaining about a short-term rental that's perpendicular to the street when I get out, when I pull out.
So there's a short-term rental perpendicular to your street that's operating right now?
Yeah, if you could pull that property up, I'll show you.
Because they're not approved to be short-term rentals, so that in itself.
Is it this one, or?
Is it this one, or?
Pull, pull this one up, the one on Forest Drive.
Okay, this is the one right here that we're talking about?
All right, if you, the lower left-hand corner. If you're at the lower left-hand corner, see that little street that goes, no, go back to that. Go back to that large view. See that little street that goes to?
Eighth Street East?
That's Eighth Street East, okay? There are, if anyone parks at the house that's right next to the one in the, that's circled in red, if anyone parks in the street there, that's a, it's a hazard to get by. If anyone parks in the street at the one that's highlighted in red, it's a hazard. When you come off of University Boulevard, there's blind spots as you come up it.
But what we're saying is the people that live there, but the people that live there now are not short-term rentals. Those people that live there have a right to park on the street if they want to. Short-term rentals don't have a right to park on the street. They have to park in the driveway. They cannot park on the street. But if somebody who owns the house, or if somebody's just renting the house, long-term rental, they can park on the street.
And if I'm driving down Thirty-Fourth Avenue right there, and there's a park, there's a car parked in the street, how do I know if it's a short-term rental or somebody that's visiting or somebody that lives there? How do I know that?
That they rent the house out, and when they, that you don't know, but if you call and complain about it, and it's a short-term rental, then that's a mark against them.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak for or against? At this time, we'll close public comment and start with board comment.
I have no issues. I'm in favor of the staff recommendation of six adults, three vehicles.
I also am in favor of the staff recommendations.
With this being new short-term rental in this area, I'd like to see for a probationary period the four-two, just so that, because we just approved one down the street, four-two, so like to see four-two for this one. Then that way, see how the probationary period goes if there are any issues with the parking on the street or anything like that, and see if we get any reports of, you know, any complaints or anything in that year's time.
Yeah, I would agree with, I prefer to see four-two with the concerns of the parking. And I think this would give, give us time to see from a probation standpoint how it's going to shake out.
I agree with four-two.
Paul and Linda, four-two, is that okay with you all, Paul? Petitioner, are you okay with four-two?
Anything less is acceptable.
Okay. All right, at this time, we'll close board comment. I'll read the motion. Stacy Wilcox petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at seventeen Forest Drive, Zoned R-one, Council District Five, four adults, two vehicles, thirty nights, and one-year probation. Voting with Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
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 Motion approved.
Next case is ZBA seventy-nine, twenty-four. YFM Realty LLC petitions for a special exception for a short-term rental. This is at thirty-one ten Eighth Street, Zone R-three, Council District One. So here we have the zoning of the property as well as the aerial view. Here we have an image of the surrounding short-term rentals in the general area. And then this is a view of the, the property from the street, and then the image of the parking area, the driveway directly next to the house. So Lakeisha Crawford and Leonard Jones will be the primary contacts in case of an emergency. They will also be available twenty-four hours a day. Petitioner has managed ten rental properties and one, one short-term rental property in the Tuscaloosa area. The house is equipped with cameras and fingerprint secure code entry. It is not owner-occupied. The house will remain vacant when it's not being rented short-term. This house has three bedrooms and one and a half bathrooms. The petitioner requests seven adults and five vehicles. If approved, based off the parking, staff recommends four adults and two vehicles. We did not receive any public comment for this application, and we have the representative here in person.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
YFM Realty Representative?
My name's Leonard Jones. Address six-one-eight James R. Harrison Jr. Parkway.
Tell us your plan.
My plan is to also run this short-term rental. I got one, it'll be a year in November. Everything's been going pretty smooth. I live close by and I also work probably about two miles from there, so if anything happened, I can be on-site for both locations.
Any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. Does no one sign up to speak for or against? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this? Okay, at this time, we'll close public comment. We'll start with board comment, milling with Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, I have no issues. I'm in favor of the staff recommendation of four adults, two vehicles.
I agree with staff recommendations.
I agree as well, four-two, thirty nights, one year. He's got a previous experience and hasn't had any issues.
I'm in favor as well.
I agree with the staff recommendations as well.
Okay, we'll close board comments at this time. I'll read the motion. ZBA dash seventy-nine dash twenty-four. YFM Realty LLC petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at thirty-one ten Eighth Street, Zone R-three, Council District One, four adults, two vehicles, thirty nights, one-year probation. Voting with Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
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 Motion approved.
Next case is ZBA eighty-twenty-four. Justin Ferguson petitions for a special exception to allow a short-term rental at thirty-six oh-six Eighteenth Avenue Northeast. This property is Zoned R-two, Council District Three. Here we have the zoning of the property as well as that aerial view. We do not have any short-term rentals in the general area. And here we have a view of that house from the street as well as that parking area. The petitioner will be the primary contact in case of an emergency. They will be available twenty-four hours a day. The petitioner has experience managing short-term rentals in another state, have no experience in Tuscaloosa. The house is equipped with outside cameras, ring doorbell, motion alarm, and keypad locks. The house is owner-occupied, and it has four bedrooms and two bathrooms. The house is owner-occupied, and it has four bedrooms and two bathrooms. The petitioner is requesting eight adults and four vehicles. If approved, staff recommends eight adults and four vehicles. Uh, we did receive six public comment and opposition, opposition to this request, and we do have the representative here in person.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson?
Justin Ferguson, Three-six zero-six Eighteenth Avenue Northeast. Um, so me and my wife work on the college campus, and one of the things that we notice with students and their families is them coming into town and wanting a place to stay, but then they stay. I feel like it's a lot of the Northerners, I would say, that are just like coming in and wanting a place to stay, but didn't get to plan well, so they're, um, wanting a place, and me and my wife just wanted to have a weekend or two where we get to serve either students that we're connected to, or things like that with their families, so something that it isn't, because it's our primary home, we're not like, hey, just anyone stay at our house, but more of the sense of building a clientele, of having people that are trustworthy in our neighborhood, so. Um, and then I have experience with managing short-term rentals in Norman, Oklahoma, so a, a different college campus space with a guy named Cooper Cadel, who is also my emergency contact, and a person that we would either stay with who's five minutes down the road, or that he would also be there to help as well, so. That's it.
Um, your neighbors have expressed concerns about, um, having strangers in their neighborhood, and so I think you've addressed that, wanting to have a set clientele maybe that you deal with?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, and you will be with Cooper sometimes, but sometimes Cooper might just be the only one responsible?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Ferguson.
Thank you.
Uh, one question, you requested eight-four, if we were to do less than that, would you be okay with?
Yeah.
Anyone, no one signed up to speak for or against, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against? Okay, we'll close public comment and begin with board comment, Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, I have no issues, I'm in favor of, uh, staff recommendations.
I am not in favor of eight adults and four vehicles. I would be more in favor of six adults. I now realize it's a four-bedroom home, uh, but I think six, six adults and, um, three vehicles is what I would consider.
Go back, is this the first one in this area?
That's correct.
Okay. Typically, when it's the first one in the area, we like to start you out with a little bit less than what maybe the house can do, let the neighbors get comfortable with it, you get comfortable with it, so that we kind of ease into it. It's your probationary period, when you come back, if things, um, go well, there are no issues or problems, then we can consider bumping to the eight-four, so I'm in favor of six-three.
Yeah, I'm in favor of six-three as well.
I'm in favor of six-three also.
Okay. So at this time, we'll close board comments, I'll read the motion. ZBA dash eighty dash twenty-four, Justin Ferguson petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at Thirty-six oh-six Eighteenth Avenue Northeast, uh, Zoned R-two, Council District Three, six adults, three vehicles, thirty nights, one-year probation, voting with Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
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 Motion approved.
Next case is ZBA eighty-one twenty-four, Lane McCool petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property in a historic district at Fifteen Autobahn Place. Uh, this property is Zoned R-three H and Council District Four. Here we have the zoning of the property, as well as that aerial view. Here we have all the short-term rentals in the general area, and a view of the house from the road, and then a closer-up view of that parking area, driveway. The petitioner will be the primary contact in case of an emergency, they will also be available twenty-four hours a day. They do not have any experience managing short-term rentals. The house is equipped with keypad locks, and it is owner-occupied. Uh, the house has five bedrooms and two bathrooms. The petitioner requests ten adults and four vehicles. If approved, staff recommends four adults and two vehicles, based off of the driveway and parking. We did receive one comment in opposition to this request, and we do have the petitioner here in person.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. McCool?
Good evening, my name is James McCool, and I live at Fifteen Autobahn Place. Um, I'm here, my wife, Lane McCool, who submitted this, the petition, she had to travel on business, but I am a property owner, as well as Lane, and I'm also here with my mother.
I'm Nicka McCool, and I also live at Fifteen Autobahn Place.
So thank you for, uh, considering our request. Our, um, plan is to live at this residence as a primary residence, um, and, and rent it out as a short-term, and, um, my wife, Lane, and I will be the emergency contact, and we will be staying at my in-law's house, uh, ten minutes away, just down Sixty-Nine South, so if any, um, issues or, or problems were to arise, we'd be happy to respond to those.
Mama gets to go down there, too?
I'm sure you can understand the four, the two-vehicle, uh, that was recommended by city staff because of your driveway, even though your house may have five bedrooms.
Yes, ma'am.
The driveway, I do know across the street is short-term rental, I know you have several of those in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Hopefully, you'll be as successful as the one across the street.
They're a four-two, right? Also, isn't the one across the street a four-two?
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I understand the, the staff recommending it, if we could show back the picture of the driveway, um-
I know you can't get more in there, we understand that.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Yeah.
What happens with short-term rentals, when you have a parking space like that, if you park four in there, when they back out, they don't usually go back in, they just stay parked on the street, so that's why we always, we don't want to give them any reason, you know, oh, I didn't feel like moving it back in, I was going to just be in the house for a second, so if with two, they can be side-by-side or whatever, however, so that's how we kind of look at that, when we're looking at it for short-term rental purposes.
Would, would the staff consider three, or is, is it two?
I think what happened is, we looked at, we talked about maybe looking at three, but then it'll be in the walkway, and then you see the sidewalk, that the third, isn't that what engineering was kind of saying, that it would be in the right-of-way?
Yeah, based on the width of the driveway, engineering recommended two vehicles could comfortably fit.
If, if you look at the picture, you could easily fit two more vehicles, and it, and it would not be obstructing the, the sidewalk, um, and, and that's why we had originally thought four. We, we, we're hoping for three, just because it is a five-bedroom, so if we, if we limited it to just two cars, it, it would limit our, our clientele, um, but, but we understand the concerns.
This is your probationary period, as you go through this, and no issues, and you see it, and that's, that's what we kind of in the first go around, see what happens there.
Okay. Yep, okay, I think we can, uh-
Any other questions?
Be fine with a two-car for the probationary period, and then was it also, it was four adults, correct?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, and that doesn't count children, so that just counts the adults of, you know, children come, because children aren't counted in that number, it's just four adults and not the children, so families could come, parents, yeah.
Yeah. I, I, I also understand why the staff would, would recommend four, is there any way we could ask for maybe six?
Just because we do have a lot of bedrooms.
Yeah, it is, it is a five-bedroom.
It's usually two adults per vehicle, we do our math, four and two, six and three, that kind of thing, um, that's what we've always done, done it that way for that reason.
It is also something that's written in the code as well, to support that typically, if the approval were to be for two adults, it's for one car for every two adults.
So that's the reason, the methodology behind that.
Yep, I understand, okay. If that's what they think is best, then, then we'll move forward with that, especially for the probationary period.
Yeah, and as you know, you're limited to thirty nights.
Yes. Yep.
James, you have to try, there's nothing wrong with trying and asking, I'm sure mama taught that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
No problem. Anyone, um, there's no one signed up to speak for or against, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against? We'll close public comment at this time, and we will start with board comment, Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, I'm in favor of, uh, staff recommendations.
I'm also in favor of staff recommendations.
I agree as well, four, uh, four and two, thirty nights and one year, I agree with staff recommendations.
I'm in favor as well.
I agree with staff recommendations as well.
Okay, we'll close board comments, I'll read the petition. ZBA dash eighty-one dash twenty-four, Lane McCool petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property in a historic district located at Fifteen Autobahn Place, Zoned R-dash-three H, Council District Four, adult, four adults, two vehicles, thirty nights, one year, voting with Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
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 Motion approved.
Next case is ZBA eighty-two twenty-four, Chris Strickland petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property at Thirteen Hundred Thirteenth Avenue East. This property is Zoned R-two, Council District Five. Here we have the zoning of the property, as well as an aerial view. We do not have any surrounding short-term rentals in the area, and then here we have an image of the house, as well as the driveway. The petitioner will be the primary contact in case of an emergency, they will also be available twenty-four hours a day. The petitioner does not have experience managing short-term rentals. The house is equipped with outside cameras, a ring doorbell, motion alarm, and keypad locks. House is not owner-occupied, and it will be used for long-term rentals when it's not being rented short-term. It has three bedrooms and two bathrooms. The petitioner requests six adults and three vehicles. If approved, staff recommends six adults and three vehicles. We did not receive any public comment for this request, and we do have the petitioner here in person. Thanks.
Okay, Chris Strickland?
Good evening, my name is Dana Strickland, I'm at One-Two-Three-One Germantown Road, I'm representing my husband, Chris, and the petition to, um, approve short-term rental of the property at Thirteen Hundred Thirteenth Avenue East, Tuscaloosa.
Okay, and tell us your plan.
Um, we're planning on just using it as a property to, um, rent for game day, graduation events, um, other events, especially in coordination with university events, um, the property is located about two and a half miles from the stadium, um, and the university, um, campus, and, um, just-
That's the plan, I got you, okay? Go back to the house for me, please? Any questions for the petitioner?
Did the slide say who the point of contact would be?
Who would the-
It would be my husband, Chris Strickland.
And where will y'all stay? You don't live here, this is not-
No, we, we don't live on the property, we're about ten to fifteen minutes away from the property.
For the, for the three vehicles, this is a question for the city, the garage, is that a one-car garage, is that a two-car garage, and they just have to move those item, items out of the garage?
That's correct, so the garage, the, the office of city engineers reviewed it, one car would be parked in the garage, and then you could have two in the driveway.
So... The two that's in the driveway, so will one be on the grass, because we can't stack, correct?
I know the office of city engineers, when they went out there, they felt comfortable with two, um, again, it, it would be up to the board's discretion if they wanted to limit vehicles.
So they would not be stacked, you cannot park three cars behind each other.
There was gravel there, and it is grown up, and there are some, um, like cinder block, kind of, like if you look to the left of the columns, you can kind of see the cinder block where the gravel was. Yes, he's remodeling. He, that will be phase two of the remodel, we, we're not doing anything to the driveway in this phase one.
I think I would feel comfortable with three cars, if you could tell that that was parking and not yard, so even if it had some gravel there, that just, I don't know, how do y'all feel about that? Because it's, it's really hard to tell that that's parking right now, but-
That would have to, I would, I would be comfortable with that meaning-
Ah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, some, some gravel down there, and then, because then one under the carport, the gravel on the side, and then that way they were not-
Three stacks.
So gravel, the area that was once gravelled.
Yeah. Circle that space, yeah, right in there.
That shouldn't be a problem.
Okay. Paul, are you okay? All right, thank you, Mr.-
Thank you.
Dana had signed up to speak, uh, in favor of it, so we don't have anyone else sign up. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak for or against this petition? Would like to close public comment? We'll close, excuse me, we'll close public comment, and begin with board comment, Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, I have no issues, I'm in favor of the, uh, staff recommendations, just as long as we add, uh, there'll be half the gravel added for that third vehicle for designated parking.
I agree.
I, I'm in agreement with our fellow board members with the stipulation of adding the gravel for the third parking space.
Yeah, I'm in agreement as well.
I agree also.
Okay, we will close, uh, board comment, and I will read the petition. So... ZBA dash eighty-two dash twenty-four, Chris Strickland petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at Thirteen Hundred Thirteenth Avenue East, Zoned R-dash-two, Council District Five, six adults, three vehicles, thirty nights, one-year probation, adding gravel for the third parking space to the side. Voting with Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
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 Motion is approved.
Next case is ZBA eighty-three twenty-four, Tanner Ashcraft petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property at Thirty-eight Cedar Knoll, uh, Zoned R-two, Council District Six. Here we have the zoning of the property, as well as an aerial view. Here we do have a couple of short-term rentals in the general area, an image of that house from the street, and then an image of the driveway. We also received additional images from, uh, the applicant showing how many cars can fit into the driveway, uh, that was after the packets were posted, uh, so the request, Tanner Ashcraft will be the primary contact in case of an emergency, they will be available twenty-four hours a day. The petitioner has experience managing multiple short-term rental properties in the general Tuscaloosa area. Uh, the house is equipped with exterior cameras, smart locks, noise monitors, smoke detectors, and crowd control. The house is not owner-occupied, it will be, uh, remain vacant or be rented long-term when it's not being rented short-term. The house has four bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms. The petitioner is requesting eight of four and four vehicles, uh, eight adults and four vehicles. If approved, staff recommends eight adults and four vehicles. Uh, we did not receive any public comment for this request, and we do have the representative here in person.
Can you pull the house back up for me?
Sure.
And staff goes with eight-four?
Once we received the additional photos, we, we sent them over to the office of city engineers, they confirmed they felt comfortable with, with seeing this photo, that four vehicles could, could park safely on the property.
Okay, thank you. Come on down, Tanner.
Tanner Ashcraft, Nine-zero-three Heritage Drive. Do you have any questions for me?
I do. Tell me about this crowd control, I haven't seen that before.
Yeah, I think it was just listed different, so, uh, our noise monitors have a crowd control feature, it counts the Bluetooth devices, um, on the house, so say that we had eight guests, if it was registering thirty, thirty-five Bluetooth devices, then it's, it's flagging us, um, hey, you might want to check it out, because you can't go one-for-one, because everybody has a phone, iPad- Hey, you might want to check it out because you can't go one for one because everybody has a phone, iPad, computer. There's Bluetooth devices throughout the house when nobody's there. So that's why the number is a good bit higher, but that, that's what that is, yeah.
You're the first one that came up as far as I know with the noise, uh, monitor. And that just kind of, I blew me away. So I'd never seen crowd control.
Those, they're invaluable to us. The, the course, course of noise, that speaks for itself, but the climate control on the houses, we don't have smart thermostats. You know, we have thresholds if it gets too cold or too hot or, you know, whatever it may be. So those, that's a really important tool in our playbook.
May I ask how many houses you are now, uh, managing for short-term rental?
It's around the twenty number. Um, we've got several in...
Just curious.
In Northport, um, on the lake, some south of town in the, in the county. We've got quite a few trying to get onboarded right now. So hopefully we'll be adding to that quite a bit.
Thank you.
So the four cars.
Yeah, the driveway really widens out at the back. That's a picture, um, that the owners actually sent me. That's his big F-two-fifty trucks. That's a, that's a big truck right there you see. And of course, there's a, look like a five-gallon paint bucket right there on the left, making it look a little more narrow than it is. But, yeah, it does widen out. Of course, you can see three cars right there at the end, pretty easily back there.
Any other questions for Tanner? Thank you, Tanner.
Thank you.
We don't have anybody signed up to speak for or against. Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against this petition? Okay, we'll close public comment and start with board comment, Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, I have no issues. I'm in favor of staff recommendations.
I just, I have a problem always with starting off with eight people and four cars in a neighborhood. I, I would be okay with six, and I know you can park it, but they're not, they're all parkable cars. You don't have like three big Ram trucks that would... Or you could have four big Ram trucks. I think I would be more comfortable with six adults and three vehicles.
I, I am too, especially when it's in an area where there are houses close together. I'm just more comfortable with six and three, um, making sure that everybody stays in the driveway.
Yeah, I'm in favor with six and three as well.
I'm fine with six and three.
Mr. Rollins, are you okay? So we'll close board comment. I'll read the motion. Tanner Ashcraft, Ashcraft petitions for a special exception to allow a short-term rental of a property located at thirty-eight Cedar Knoll, Zone R dash two, Council District Six. Uh, six adults, three vehicles, thirty nights, one year probation. Voting with Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
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 Motion approved.
All right, the next two cases we're going to present together since they are on the same property. We'll have two separate motions at the end. So this is for ZBA-eighty-four twenty-four and ZBA-eighty-five twenty-four. Bama B and B, Kim Roberts petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property at five-oh-six Seventeenth Street East and five-oh-six Seventeenth Street one-half East. Zoned RA two, Council District Two. So here we have the zoning of the property as well as the aerial view. And then here we have an image of the short-term rentals. There are none in the surrounding area. This is for ZBA-eighty-four, so this is five-oh-six Seventh, Seventeenth Street, the property or the house in front. And then here we have five-oh-six one-half Seventeenth Street. So it's the structure in the back. Bama B and B, Kim Roberts would be the primary contact in case of an emergency. The petitioner has fifteen years of experience as a property management company. Uh, they have equipped both houses with outside cameras, keypad locks, lock boxes, and noise detection systems. The house is not owner occupied and it will be vacant or rented long-term when it's not being rented short-term. Uh, so we have divided the two requests for each petition. Five-oh-six Seventeenth Street East has four bedrooms and three bathrooms. The petitioner requests eight adults and four vehicles. If approved, staff recommends four adults and two vehicles. The second request is for five-oh-six Seventeenth Street one-half East, has one bedroom and one bathroom. The petitioner requests four adults and two vehicles. Staff recommends two adults and one vehicle. Uh, this was also noted from the office of city engineers that there should be no parking in the front of the houses or in front of the, the front house, and we'll go back to an image of that. But the vehicles must utilize the designated parking spaces in the back, and this is for both petitions. We did not, or we did receive one comment in opposition for this request and we do have the representative here in person.
So the parking that I saw in the photo, the yellow stripe with the gravel, is that's in city right-of-way?
That's correct.
So that's where they cannot park?
That's correct. For the purpose of a short-term rental, that's correct, yeah.
But when they long-term rental, they can park there?
From our understanding, the office of city engineers didn't have an issue with them using those spaces. As you can see, the property to the, to the north, if redevelopment were to occur based on the zoning, those sidewalks would be required to extend. So those technically are located in the public right-of-way.
Thank you. Ms. Roberts, come on down.
Hello, Kim Roberts, thirteen-seven fifty-two West Lake Drive. Both of these properties sit on the same lot. They've both been long-term rental properties for many, many years. They've always parked in the front, so I'm not sure why that is not allowed all of a sudden, but they always use that for parking.
Were they long-term rental as residences?
They were long, uh, the long-term renters. I mean, they had, you know, like leased renters that were in there.
Yes, because this one looks like a business, so I was just making sure it wasn't like a...
And it's fine for the long-term renters to park there.
And so where is the difference between short-term and long-term? Those are long parking spots.
Yes.
We measured them.
So, long-term rentals are allowed to park in the city right-of-way. So theoretically, if these were not here and it was just on-street parking, they could park there and it would be fine. Because of where the right-of-way falls on this property, it's really unique in the fact that those...
There's not enough space above the right-of-way?
Correct.
Hmm, okay. Well, there's also parking in the back and the, um, so the owner may end up deciding to add some more spaces in the back if that's going to be a problem for short-term. We've got three designated spots back there right now and plenty of turnaround, um, back there. This property, uh, is, it is a one-bedroom, but, um, it has, um, a living room with a sleeper sofa in it. So that's why we were hoping to go with the four adults and two cars in the back and there are three spaces for them.
So this is a one that I pass by on a regular basis.
It's right behind McDonald's.
Yeah, I, I pass by it frequently and they haven't always parked in the front. On this particular property, they haven't always parked on the front like that, like those four parking spaces like that. They haven't always done that. And I, the back is tight. I look back there, it's tight back there. The picture makes it look like it's a lot more space, but when you're, these are closer together and it's a tight little fit on that lot, so, um... And it looks like those parking spaces are longer, but they're right there on the road. When you drive by, they're...
But they are very long. You do have to back out into the street, you know, when you come out of them, but, um...
I mean, you, you are in the street. Like, once you park there and you're backing out, you're backing out into, you gotta wait for traffic.
The good thing is it's on a very sharp bend right there, so the cars, as they're coming around, have to go pretty slow.
You hope they go slow.
Right.
Now, this is, this is a one-bedroom.
This one is a one-bedroom. The other one's a four-bedroom.
Sleeper sofa, but you know we don't count that. You know it has to be a bedroom with a closet and a window. The yellow one's the hat. Just a second, making sure.
Anything else for us?
Nope, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So... Do we have anybody signed up to speak for? No one signed up to speak for or against? Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against this property? Okay, at this time, we'll close public comment and start with board comment, Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, I have no issues. I'm in favor of, uh, staff recommendations for both properties.
I'm not. I am okay with, uh, the first property, the second property being a one-bedroom. I think two adults and one vehicle. Oh, sorry. It's a long night. Yes, you're right. So I am a, I am, I am in agreement with staff recommendations.
So, um, it's been a long time. Okay, so I'm in agreement with the four-two and the two-one. Four-two on Seventeenth Street and two-one on seventeen and a half. So I'm in favor of staff recommendations.
I'm in favor as well.
I'm in favor as well.
So we'll close public comment. I'll read the motions. I'll read them separate. We'll vote the first time and then I'll read the next one and we'll vote. Okay, ZBA-eighty-four twenty-four, Bama B and B, Kim Roberts petitions for a special exception to allow a short-term rental of a property located at five-oh-six Seventeenth Street East, Zoned RA dash two, Council District Two. For, for adults, two vehicles, thirty nights, one year with parking in the, in the back. Voting with Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion approved. ZBA-eighty-five twenty-four, Bama B and B, Kim Roberts petitions for a special exception to allow a short-term rental of a property located at five-oh-six Seventeenth Street East and a half. Zoned RA dash two, Council District Two. Two adults, one vehicle, thirty nights, one year with parking in the rear. Voting with Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next case is ZBA-eighty-six twenty-four, Kramer Mize petitions for a special exception to allow short-term rental of a property at thirty-three-oh-eight University Boulevard East, Zoned R one, Council District Five. So here we have the zoning of the property as well as the aerial view. Again, I will point out, this was a property that did receive approval, uh, but they have not activated their license, so you did not see any active short-term rentals in the area. Uh, here we have a view of the house. This is from across the road. And then here we have an aerial view and you can see the parking area as well. Uh, Bama B and B will be the primary contact in case of an emergency. The petitioner has fifteen years of experience as a property management company. This house will be equipped with op, outside cameras, keypad locks, carbon monoxide and fire extinguishers. The house is not owner occupied. It will remain vacant or be rented long-term when it is not being rented short-term. The house has four bedrooms and three bathrooms. The petitioner requests eight adults and four vehicles. If approved, staff recommends eight adults and four vehicles. We received at least four public comments in opposition to this request and we do have the petitioner here in person.
Didn't we have a picture that showed it with the parking spaces with people, with some parking?
We can pull that up. It doesn't look like that made it in the PowerPoint. We can pull that image up.
If you'll pull that up so we can see that real quick.
Sure.
Ms. Roberts can come up while we can see that. Are who speaking on the, Mr. Mize or Ms.?
Uh, yes, this is Kramer Mize for thirty-three-oh-eight University Boulevard East. This is a property that, um, we've, has, has been in extended stay, managed by Bama Bed and Breakfast for over, uh, a year now and, um, we haven't had any issues with any of the tenants. We haven't had any issues with, um, with the parking or space inside the home, which is one reason we were requesting, um, eight-four. And, yeah, you've got the pictures there for, um, that shows vehicles on the pad and then another vehicle can go directly up into the driveway. And still, on the pad, vehicles have the ability to back out and go forward out on University Boulevard as well.
Anything else for us?
I don't think so.
Any questions for? All right, thank you. Anyone here to speak for or against?
My name is Delaine Smith. I live at thirty-three-twenty Eighth Street East. I am a thirty-two-year resident there. Um, our neighbor, neighborhood has been quiet, pretty much stable with long-term residents and, um, we would like to keep it that way. I am not in favor of this being a short-term rental. This house, this property is going to be affected with the University Boulevard, um, reconstruction or restructure the sidewalks, bike lanes, that sort of thing. They are suggesting that the, um, main driveway be put on Eighth Street East, which is the street that I live on and several other neighbors. We already have trouble with our trash cans, our garbage not being picked up, garbage being strode up and down the street, um, and we as neighbors have to clean that up. And there have, has been some issues that we have not brought forward to the city about trash cans overflowing from this property. And I realize that we should have, I guess, called the city, but, um, we will do so from here on out. And, um, you know, it's usually when they clean out the house that the trash can is overflowing, you know, and with it being a one-car whip lane, um, you, you don't have room to hardly get over unless you're in or pass unless you're in somebody else's driveway. When you're trying to go in and out on a one-way street, it makes it very difficult. My husband has heart failure. And I don't want anything to obstruct medical personnel, any kind of services coming down our street because our garbage is already affected, our trash debris trucks, all of that, our mail. When you come, if you're coming from my house on Eighth Street and you go to the end of the street at Forest Drive and Thirty-Fourth Avenue East and you try to go left or you go right. Chateau Apartments is, is right there facing university and then there is a rental house that Mr. Stecom was speaking of. It is not short-term rental, but it is college students that live there. And we have contacted the city, not recently, but we have contacted the city. The fire department has been out there. The, um, Kip Tiner has also got involved and made comments with the fire department, the chief going out because it's a fire department hazard. And it's just an obstruction all the way around. If this house gets voted or passes tonight, then that will be three houses within six hundred feet, short-term rental houses. We don't want that. I don't want that as a neighborhood. Would y'all want that? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for or against?
Yes, sir. Williams Stecom, thirty-three zero seven Eighth Street East, and for all the reasons that I mentioned before on the other, it's double on this one. When the city comes in and does their renovation on, uh, University Boulevard, which I think is supposed to start in February, I don't know how much of the property in this particular, at this particular house as well as Mike Cromwell that lives next door is going to be taken by the city. And it's, we can't get a definite picture from the city engineers as far as what this renovation with a retaining wall along that side of the university will look like. That driveway may be eliminated. And it's, when the final plan gets resolved, which means all prop, all access to the house will come off of Eighth Street East, which can't handle any more traffic. I mean, I don't know.
So it sounds like if they're going to make traffic have to start going, they would have to widen it or do something if you're...
I've called the city about widening Eighth Street East. And I guess there's not enough houses generating enough taxes or whatever, whatever's involved that they're willing to do anything with it. I even suggested that they come to the entrance off of Thirty-Fourth Avenue and just make an area wide enough for two cars or two vehicles. Because if you're pulling out from Eighth Street East onto Thirty-Fourth Avenue East, if cars want to turn in, one of you's got to wait because no two cars are going to get... The city trucks, uh, garbage truck, uh, trash pickup, uh, whatever, has run over the concrete cover on the drainage that goes on the, the, uh... that goes on the, the, well, would be the south side of Eighth Street, the side that we live on, and broken the concrete because the drive is that narrow. Now, the houses on this side of the street don't have backyards. They all have two front yards. You either have a front front yard or a front backyard. And if the, if the city comes in and takes any of the property and puts that retaining wall along that side, that driveway's going to become useless. It'd be, it'd be just a big patio. Which means all traffic has to come off of Eighth Street East. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else like to speak for or against? Okay, at this time we'll close public comment. Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to state that I've spoken with my neighbors before I came on my right and left, not everyone, but, and made sure they have not had an issue with any of the tenants for the past year and a half or so. They haven't. That is their main concern and I understand that and told them, please, you know, let me know if that is ever the case because we don't want that either. We want to make sure that that doesn't happen. There is a proposed sidewalk project. It could eliminate the access to University Boulevard. I'm asking you to consider it how it sits now because the city hasn't even done appraisals on the properties yet or moved forward to negotiate or anything like that. Obviously, if things change, they will have to add a driveway. They will also have to add the pad that would lose access in light cond to the back, so it wouldn't change any of the parking. It would change access to the back street. However, I'd also like to say, you know, as an extended stay rental, it, it, it's rarely been vacant. As a short-term, when you have people coming in on the weekends, that's actually less traffic. So if you have a May graduation weekend, you got people coming in two or three days of the month versus contract workers who are coming in every day. So it may actually be less traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else like to speak for or against?
Does the city have any comments as far as whatever one is speaking of with closing off university or making it?
Yeah, I'd like to say something.
It was just me, it was just mentioned, do I need to give my name and address again? It was just mentioned that basically a survey was taken of people that live in the neighborhood, of anyone opposing this. Nobody that I know of agreed with it. We live at 3307 Eighth Street. Lady that lives next door to us was adamantly opposed to it. The Seers that live next door to them was adamantly opposed to it. Mike Cromwell, who lives next door to them, was adamantly opposed to it. And then it's their house. Then the house on the corner, the people were adamantly opposed to it. So I know Denise or Delane is adamantly opposed to it. So you got a question? Let me have it.
I'm, thank you. So, so I will say this, because going back and forth like that, but the thing of it is, what people say to one person and what they say to somebody else, it could be two different things when you're standing face to face with somebody. So what I say to my neighbor and then what I say to the person that I'm talking about may be different. So I'm not saying that anybody's telling a story or anybody's, but we do know that people can be one way and then another way when they're with different people. So that really has nothing to do with it whether he says he talked to his neighbors and they said they were okay with it and you're saying the neighbors aren't okay with it.
They didn't say they were okay with it. They just said they hadn't had any issue with the tenants.
Okay. They didn't have any issues with the tenants. They didn't say they were okay, but they hadn't had any issues. Okay. Okay. Well, so thank you for clarifying. They said they hadn't had any issues. They didn't say they were in favor. They hadn't had any, he asked had he had any issues with what was going on. They said they hadn't had any issues and they could still be opposed to it, so.
Going back to, I believe, Ms. Rollins' question on the coming up work, does the city have any knowledge or anything?
There have not been any specific plans put out there yet. Typically with projects like this, it does take some time to get those plans together. From our understanding, again, this is the best contact is the office of the city engineer for these kind of questions, but from what we have understood, there haven't been any formal plans even created for this yet.
So that's still a work in progress. I understand your concerns. I'm sure if that project does continue on and grow legs and become a project where plans are bit out, I would think a traffic study would be done. Most projects have a traffic study. If they are going to shift traffic, I would think they would take that into account. That's my thought on that. But I do understand y'all's concern.
And I've got to say, obviously, as everybody here knows, I did drive down Eighth Street all the way to the dead end and back and I do understand the issues with that. I just, I just really believe that when the city will come up with something, I'm not a street engineer, but they're certainly going to let emergency vehicles by. I can't imagine there being no way for an emergency vehicle to get down that street. Now, I do realize it might be difficult because the street is, it's like an alley. It's not even like a real street. It's like, to me, it's like an alley.
There are places on that street that two cars cannot pass.
I completely know that because I went down that street. I do understand. I do. I thank you for coming in and voicing your concerns. I do.
And I think that when they have public comment on the project, that's where we need to really go and voice a lot of opinion because if this is what you're dealing with, that's, to me, that's where the fight needs to be taken, is that we need this street widened and we need something done about it because that's, that's where the real issue that's happening there. But back to the issue at hand, this short-term rental, we're going to close public comment and we're going to go to board comment, starting with Mr. Rollins.
Yeah, I'm in favor of staff recommendation.
What was the staff recommendation?
I don't know about eight-four. There we go.
Sir, public comment has been closed by the board.
I'm also in favor.
Okay, so we are in favor of the, of this short-term rental. Eight-four, I think that with all that has going on, I'm more comfortable with six-three. I do know three cars can come down comfortably and go down the hill facing out, being on the pad and then I think the six, six adults is what I'm comfortable with.
Yeah, I'm a lot more comfortable with six-three than eight-four based off the concerns of the traffic and the vehicles.
I'm fine with six-three.
Can I interrupt you guys for just a moment because there's been some discussion about this? The board's approval is based on the petition as presented today. If the situation in the front changes related to parking, the approval would no longer exist. I mean, this is contingent on that, so I want to make clear that if for some reason it did get cut off, they would have to come back.
Okay.
There's, I just want to make sure, clarify that for everybody just in case.
Do we need to state that or it's?
No, I mean, I just want to clarify because I know there's been question, but it's just easier for me to make explicitly clear if your approval is based on this situation as we are evaluating it today.
So if something does happen with drawings or plans in the future, they would have to come back if the whole area was redesigned.
Right.
This approval would no longer be valid.
Be valid. Mr. Mize, you understand? All right, so we'll close board comment and we'll start, I'll read the petition. ZBA-86-24 Kramer Mize petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 3308 University Boulevard East, Zone R1, Council District 5. Six adults, three vehicles, thirty nights and one year probation. Voting with Mr. Rollins.
Yes.
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 Motion is approved.
Next case is ZBA-87-24 Todd Simpson petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property at 2215 First Avenue. This property is Zoned R1, Council District 2. Here we have the zoning of the property as well as its location. There, you can see all the surrounding short-term rentals that are approved. And then here we have an image of the house as well as a parking pad, driveway. Keandra Hutton will be the primary contact in case of an emergency. The petitioner has experience managing one house in West Virginia. This house is equipped with rent ring cameras on the front door as well as on the carport. The house is not owner occupied. It will remain vacant when it is not being rented short-term. The house has three bedrooms and two bathrooms. The petitioner is requesting six adults and three vehicles. If approved, staff recommends six adults and three vehicles. We did not receive any public comment for this request and we do have the petitioner here in person.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, Haynes Waldo, 1323 Main Avenue, Northport.
What's your name?
Haynes Waldo. I'm here on behalf of Todd Simpson and Kelly Jester.
Okay, and who's Kendra?
Uh, Ken, Keandra, excuse me, is the house cleaner that was looking to make some extra money. From what I understand, so she is going to be the point of contact as well as my client that, I represent him. I'm a Realtor in town. Due to real estate license law, I do not property manage, but I also try to continue my service after the closing. So if any case of emergency, I'm in downtown Northport, ten minutes from the subject property. I can be there very quickly.
So you will be the point of contact for the emergency and as well as Keandra?
He's listed Mrs. Hutton, but yes, he knows and if we need to document that as well here that I'm on the list, happy to do so. And I have experience in property management myself, or short-term rental management.
I'm sorry, I'm. Is Keandra in town and going to be managing it?
Yes, she's local. I don't know her home address.
No, no, that's fine. I'm just making sure she's going to be the primary contact. You are available to back her up if necessary.
If, yes.
And Todd Simpson is the owner of the property.
Correct.
I got it.
Sorry about that.
No, no. All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Anybody for or against? All right, we'll close public comment. Start with board comment.
I'm in favor of staff recommendations.
I'm also in favor. It seems like a reasonable request.
I agree as well.
I'm in favor also.
So we'll close board comment and I'll read the petition. ZBA-87-24 Todd Simpson petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 2215 First Avenue, Zoned R1, R-1, Council District 2. Voting with Mr. Rollins.
Yes.
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 Motion approved.
Next case is ZBA-89-24 Ronnie Richardson petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property at 1712th Avenue, Zone RMF-2, Council District 2. Here we have the zoning of the property as well as aerial view. Looks like nothing is there. These were recently built. We do not have any short-term rentals in the surrounding area. And here we have the as-built development. And then we have a picture, so they have parking underneath garage and then they also have a parking space. Sherry and Ronnie Richardson will be the primary contacts in case of an emergency. The petitioners are located in Raymond, Mississippi and plan to have a local manager to handle any emergencies. I believe they do have a local manager. I'll let them confirm who that person is. The petitioners have been in real estate for the last thirty-five years managing multiple residential and commercial properties. The house is equipped with exterior cameras as well as keypad locks. It is not owner occupied, but it will be used by the family for home football games and other sporting events when it's not being rented short-term. The house has three bedrooms and three and a half bathrooms. Their request is for six adults and two vehicles. If approved, staff recommendation is four adults and two vehicles. We did not receive any public comment for this request and we have their representative here in person.
One more time, Haynes Waldo, 1323 Main Avenue. Here on behalf of Ronnie Richardson, everything to my opinion looks good. I would request for the six people, just as these are large townhomes. There's a designated parking spot that are numbered, three parking spots per Tuscaloosa building code. We have two in the garage, one outside, again, designated behind the gate, so there can't be any extra guests funneling in. They have to have the code. You know, I could see some people wanting to put twelve people in this place. I think six is extremely reasonable as everybody would have their own bedroom. And there is a flex space upstairs because it does not have a closet. We can't market it as a bedroom. They could have pushed the limits with eight, but I feel confident that you can have a very reasonable short-term rental here with six adults.
I think, Jonathan, our concern was did this place have designated parking? So it's two in the garage and then one extra parking. We didn't know that at first.
That's, that's correct. We didn't know that there were designated parking on that spaces located in the rear.
But they are designated for that particular unit, correct?
So each unit has, out back of the development, there's ten extra spots. We have seven units. So you have seven numbered spots that are correlating to the seven units, three additional and those are first come, first served between the seven units. Again, those people have to have the gate code to fill those three additional spots.
So it's two up under in the garage?
Yes, ma'am.
And then one wherever they can find a spot. No, no, one.
In their designated spot. Yeah, definitely not.
So two in the garage and one designated.
Okay, so, okay.
And then three just extra.
Correct, yes, sir.
Is that right?
And how many units are there?
There's seven, seven townhomes total.
I was lucky enough to go in one of these. Actually, I learned what a floating staircase was. I never knew that.
We're pretty excited about that development.
It's an open area between the staircases, but it's really an unusual floor plan. I, I think considering the location, I'm sorry. I'm going to wait till you ask me.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any, any questions about the?
All right, we're closing. Anybody for or against? We're going to close public comment and then we'll go to board comment, starting with Mr. Rollins.
Yeah, I have no issues. Now that we know that there is a designated parking spot outside of the garage, I'm comfortable with six adults, three vehicles, thirty nights, one year.
I think it's definitely a unique new place to Tuscaloosa. I don't think I've seen anything else like this. I think considering the location, I am okay with six adults. Or what's staff recommendations, four adults and two vehicles. I, I mean, I realize, or, you know.
Alinda?
Six adults and three vehicles.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, thank you.
Is that six and three, sorry?
Yes, six and three.
Thank you.
I agree, my fellow board members.
I agree as well with the six and three.
I agree also.
All right, we'll close board comment and we'll read the petition. The petition is ZBA-89-24 Ronnie Richardson petitions for a special exception to allow a short-term rental of a property located at 1712th Avenue, Zone RMF-2, Council District 2. Six adults, three vehicles, thirty nights, one year. Voting with Mr. Rollins.
Yes.
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 Motion approved. At this time, I'll recuse myself and say good evening to everyone. And thank you and.
All right, this is our last case of the night. This is ZBA-90-24 JNE Legacy Enterprises petition for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property at 10B Country Club Hills. This property is Zoned R2, Council District 1. Here we have the zoning of the property as well as that aerial view and then an image of the surrounding short-term rentals. There is at least one in the upper north-right corner, northeast corner. Here we have a view of the house from the street and then a view of that parking area. It is enclosed by a gate. Joseph and Erica Eaton will be the primary contacts in case of an emergency. The petitioner does not have experience with short-term rentals. The house is equipped with exterior cameras and keypad locks and it is owner occupied. The house has five bedrooms and four and a half bathrooms. The petitioner's request is eight adults and four vehicles. If approved, staff recommends eight adults and four vehicles. If approved, staff recommends eight adults and four vehicles. We did not receive any public comment for this request and we do have the petitioner here in person.
Okay, any questions for staff? J and E? Come on down, last one.
End of the night. Hi, I'm Erica Eaton. I reside at ten B Country Club Hills. It is our primary residence. Um, when it's not rented, when it is rented, we are going to reside at our mother-in-law's. The house is equipped with cameras and keypad lock. It does also, um, have enough parking for, for vehicles. It's a five-bedroom home, of course. And.
Did you say y'all were staying in town?
Yes, we will be locally in town. So we will be available for any issues.
Any questions?
I have none, just as we've been doing with first-time rentals or short-term rentals, usually six, six adults and three vehicles. Would you be okay with that for the first year?
I understand.
Okay.
So I'd close your board comment, start with Mr. Rollins.
Yeah, I have no issues. I'm in favor.
I'm in favor of six adults, three vehicles.
Yeah, I'm also in favor of six-three, first year.
I'm in favor also.
So start voting, voting with Mr. Rollins.
Yes.
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 So I need to read the, uh, motion here. ZBA-ninety twenty-four J E Legacy Enterprises petition for a special exception to allow the short terminal of a property located at ten B Country Club Hills, zoned R-two, uh, council district one. Now studying, voting with Mr. Rollins.
Yes.
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 That's it, petition passed.